Good evening. At 7 o'clock, we'll get started by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal or decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment. At one point during each case, thank you for your willingness to help. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the neighborhood association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So I'd like to take attendance.
So noted.
And I'll need a motion to either approve or make changes to the minutes of our July 8th meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the July 8th, 2045 meeting.
Support? I have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. I would like to announce that these items will not be heard tonight. Item 2T, 730 Parkman, has been withdrawn. Item 8, 892 Eastover, has been postponed. Item 13, 1466 Lenox, has been withdrawn. And item 15, 39 Oakland Drive, has been withdrawn. So we will not be hearing those this evening. And so with that, let's call the first item, which is item 1T, 6091 Franklin Road. Is the applicant ready? Item 1T, 6091 Franklin Road. Is the applicant ready?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to move it to the end of the meeting.
Support? So let's hold on that motion. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this item from the association? Okay, so I'm going to open a public hearing to take comments from the association. If you'd like to come up.
Good evening, Board. Brian Ritter, speaking on behalf of Wing Lake Farms, Inc., and resident at 6800 Franklin Road. We've had ample time to review the, or argue the position over the past 10 months with regard to this application. And we would like to offer some comments regarding the same. In the application itself, it's asking, if we could look at the beginning words, it's asking for a placement of a waterfall feature, a rear wall feature, he's added a generator, and the replacement of, or new placement of pool equipment. What he's advising is that there was an existing wall in that space where he has built a wall. It is our comment that the wall never existed. It's brand-new. And the wall is located in the side yard, not the rear yard. In his application, he's also mentioned that all of the things that he would like to do short of the water feature are within 10 feet, or less than 10 feet. And he's suggesting that there's a 10-foot side yard setback when we all know that there's a 16-foot side yard setback. So those comments are incorrect. The generator location itself faces directly at his neighbor's home, and we don't even know how far the distance is between the two properties. Now, I've installed plenty of generators as a builder in the community, and I know that I have to be able to walk 30 feet so that I can subject the dB decibels on the sound of the generator. Well, I don't think that that generator is 30 feet from the corner of the house. And it faces all across the back of the house. If we were to scroll down slightly through some of the photographs, we can see the location. And while I understand that there might be some existing arborvitaries and everything else, all those arborvitaries are technically on the neighbor's property. If the neighbor chose to pull them down, he has the right. So Dr. Lakani, the applicant, is going to have to do something additional in order to accommodate those needs. If we look at the property line here, which he conveniently took the stakes out, and I have photographs that I took last year.
Is there any way possible I could show this?
There you go. Perfect. We can take a look at that stake. That's an engineer's stake that he had put in. And it's only nine inches from the rear of the wall, which is five feet tall, which is above the original grade. He's changed it. Let's look at another one of these photos. This one in and of itself, this is closer to the corner. It's about a foot off of the wall. This one, at the corner of the wall, which you'll see shortly, is measured, as I hooked on the stake of the engineer. And we can see that it's 12 inches off of the corner of the wall. The back of the wall. Right here, he's proposing a deck, which isn't even listed on his application. And that post, if we were to blow it up, and I can pull it up on my phone if we needed to, is only four foot eight from the property line. And we still don't have an application for the deck, the handrail, and everything else that he wants to have go along with it. Now, if we look at the application, it says, "An existing retaining wall located in the rear yard and exceeding two feet in height," which we all know. Now, Corey, if you could help me, please, and scroll down through a few of the other pictures. There's two on here. So we need to go a little bit deeper, if we could, please. Oh, oh, no, really? That's not the application. There's others. There's a winter photo. Maybe they came from the neighbor, Jamie, that showed the original. And there was never a wall there. And there was never a wall there on either side. It was a paver staircase that came down. And it was landscaping. If you look very carefully at the photo, you can see, and I think I have a photo that will indicate it a little bit closer. Oh, wow, here's a really good one. This is Google Earth. This is, that's the original. I don't see any wall there. All I see is landscaping into the neighbor's yard. Now, if we go to this photo, where the topography was modified, we can see that everything was lowered. And if you count the block, knowing roughly how tall they are, he's modified the elevation by two feet or greater, creating a necessity for a wall, not what was there. There was never a wall there. And it showed in the original packet, the one I looked at online. I don't know specifically where it is. There was a winter photo, and there was a side photo that actually showed the staircase. Understanding the unique nature of these properties, and given the pool rules, given the fence rules and ordinances regarding this situation, it's physically impossible for Dr. Lakani to put a fence up and landscape or mask these structures without impeding or penetrating onto the neighbor's property most of the line for two to three feet. So we, as a community, are against this until he provides a plan. There's lighting that's in there, and I have photographs that show the exposed wiring and the lighting. You can see the feature. We don't have a light. We don't have a, we don't have an actual engineer's feature. What we have to do is we have to trust what Mr. Lakani is saying to us. Yet, he can't provide elevations. He can't provide the space for the deck. He can't provide anything going on. And we've been asking for this for 10 months, and here we are. What we're asking is that you do justice for the neighbor and not allow him to encroach on his property. Dr. Lakani has offered to purchase a piece of property. Personally, I think it would be less expensive just to move the wall and conform with the ordinances. We, as a community, are completely opposed until there's an appropriate position and appropriate application.
Thank you very much. The comments from the association, this is kind of unusual, so you can sit down. Thank you. So why don't you come up and make your request? What's that? So your comments are done, so you don't have a rebuttal, but if you want to sit there, that's fine. So you give us your name and address?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening. My name is Sanjay Lakani, owner of 6091 Franklin. So this briefly gives you the description of the retaining wall. It's about 60 feet.
So you don't need to, but you don't have to, why don't you just tell us what you want in terms of the variances, and then if, we're doing this a little bit out of order, then you can respond maybe specifically about the wall. Why don't you explain to us the variances that you're seeking?
Go ahead and present.
Well, basically, I was going to take you, you know, a possible aerial overview of the property, going from Franklin Road towards Wing Lake on the south side of the property. The first variance which I was needing was, there was two existing air conditioners as we go to the back, two air conditioners which needed to be replaced, and they would be encroaching about eight, 10 feet from the property line. So that was the first variance. Second, next to the air conditioners was a generator. That generator was already in place, and that needs to be replaced. That's about eight feet from the property line. Going forward, where you see the yellow, third yellow, second yellow, that's where we have the pool equipment, which is ground-mounted. That pool equipment is about seven feet from the property line. To give cover, roof for the pool equipment, we're going to have a can-delivered cement deck. We need a variance for that. Going forward, the third yellow is the waterfall fire feature on the pool. We need a variance for that. Then, the retaining wall, 60 feet long. We need a variance to put a pool fence on top of the retaining wall. The retaining wall, the first 50 feet, is about two feet or less looking from the neighbor's side, which I'm given to understand doesn't need permission or variance. The last 10 feet is about four feet maximum to two feet minimum because of how the grade changes. That portion of the wall, I was going to use as a pool fence. And, you know, trying to comply with the strict mandate of the ordinance would cause undue hardship, so much that I will not be able to use the backyard. The pool, the way it is, was not which I made, which the owner to the owner, they had it that way. There is only 12 feet between the pool and the property edge on the south side. If you move anything further out from where everything was, has been for past 15 years, there has been mature vegetation there, arborvitaries, which have been there for 15 years. Before that, there was deciduous trees. The pool fence, which we have there, has been there for 15 years. So that has been the standard accepted boundary of my property and the neighbor's property. And that's about 12 to 13 feet from the pool. Now, moving that inwards towards the pool, there'd be no room for me to walk between the pool and the south side. So it is not something of my making. But trying to do and move that further towards the pool would make that pool deck completely not usable. And it would create, forget usability, it would create safety risk. Means if anyone walking around there could fall into the pool. And one of the things which we thought we'd do is, it might show in one of the pictures, the yellow thing on the pool, that's like a water feature and a fireplace. That allowed us to raise it by about 22 inches from the plane of the pool deck, which would give us some additional safety from anyone tripping or falling into the pool. So summarizing, what we need is, we need variance to put the pool fence on the retaining wall. We need the pool equipment approval to move where it's indicated. The can-delivered deck and the stairs coming out from there, the air conditioner, the generator, the pool feature, fireplace, and on the Wing Lake side, that is the east side of the property, we'd also need to put a pool fence. Part of the pool fence would be in that 16 feet, you know, and that would be four feet or higher. So we need, you know, variance for that as well. So essentially, we need-
You don't need a variance, just to clarify. You don't need a variance for the back pool fence.
Okay, okay. So essentially, as I understand, the first 50 feet of the retaining wall doesn't need any because it's less than two feet. The remaining 10 feet is what I was looking to get a variance on. And I was looking to get approval to put a pool fence if, because the last 10 feet of the, of the retaining wall, it's, it's not exactly, it's on the highest point, 48 inches, four feet, which is the pool core requirement. But as you come towards the house, it's about two feet high. So that would not meet pool, so I might have to put a four-feet wall on top of that. Now, if I put it there for aesthetics, I may have to extend it towards the house. So that's why I was asking maximum allowable pool fence from the complete length of the retaining wall. I may not have to do it fully. I may just have to do part, the last 10 feet. I may have to put the four-feet retaining, uh, pool fence. Beyond that, I may not have to do that because there's already a pool fence existent which is on, you know, and between the pool fence and the retaining wall, there is arborvitaries. I have pictures, maybe, that pictures might, might help better.
All right, so I just, I want to go back to that. So this is the recent survey that you got since last year before. So that shows the measurement and the distances of all the structures that you're requesting from the property line.
That's correct.
Do you have a side view of the retaining wall?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So this is the full view of the retaining wall. This is the full view of the retaining wall from, you know, looking from my property towards the neighbor. This is the view of the retaining wall looking from the lake towards my house. This is one more view. This is one more view. This is looking at it from the top. One more view from the top. You can see the mature vegetation already there. This is one more view from the top. The last 10 feet is the one which is more than two feet. The first 50 feet is two feet or less. This is the retaining wall. Now, all this digging what you see, all the digging what you see is primarily so we can replumb the pool. The, the pool equipment was sitting lakeside. We are moving for the aesthetics of the neighborhood. None of my personal preferences, but for the neighborhood to cut down sound, to cut down, you know, visual aesthetics. We wanted to move the pool equipment from the lakeside. So if anyone is on the pontoon in the lake looking towards the, they're seeing vegetation and, and, you know, the, the pool equipment. If we're going to move it right close to the house, easy for us to operate, the, the smart Wi-Fi systems would work better because of the Wi-Fi connection close to the house. And they lock everything positive for that. So that's where we wanted to move further. This is one more view. This is one more view. So all this digging is, nothing of that digging is going to cause any kind of problems to any neighbor. It was not, the retaining wall was not done for retaining any drainage from my side to their side. On their side, on the neighbor's side, is actually higher. The grade is higher on their side than my side. It was the arborvitaries and aesthetics. This is one more view. You can already see the fence here. This is very important, the existing fence, which is there. And I spoke with the building department. They said this fence, as it stands, is non-compliant, quote, not, not quote compliant because it is a chain-link fence, and there is an option to put slats, make it compliant. And they said, if you do that, they don't care. They'll be compliant, and they'll meet the pool requirements. And they, I, I had the director of the building department talk with Andrea as well. She can confirm that the pool fence is really not an issue at this point of time. In the first 50 feet, the last 10 feet, I do need the pool fence. And that's where, either if I could use the fence, the, the retaining wall, as the pool fence because it's four feet, solve the problem. But three, four feet, I'm not at four feet, so I might have to do something.
Okay, I think, I think we understand that. That's good. We've got a clear picture on the retaining wall, the size and the feet. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
I just have one question. Do you know the distance between the edge of your pool to your property line?
About 14, 15, 14 or 15 feet, 14 feet above. So per se, the pool is, as it is, not compliant.
That's all I needed to know.
Any other questions on the board? All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. I've already heard from the association. Anyone else that would like to speak on this that hasn't spoken yet?
My name's James Olazimer. My address is 6125 Dakota Circle. I am the neighbor he's referring to with the wall. Good evening, and I appreciate your, thank you for taking the time and your service to the community. I'm strongly opposed to this wall variance for the following reasons. The wall was built without proper permitting or a survey, and as a result, was erected in such a way that the required screening and fence will encroach on my property. The pool fence as it is now, that's on my property. I mean, I can take, I want to take that down. It's not, it doesn't look good. It's in bad shape, particularly after the construction, and it just needs to come out. The grade has changed along the property line. You can easily see that they did not dig holes for those arborvitaries. They just placed them in and put the dirt probably from the yard on top, and they're dying. Those nine arborvitaries at the end, those are all new. Those have decreased my sight lines. So the length of the, yeah, the length of the wall requires additional arborvitaries, which you see there, those are new, and they're dying. And Mr. Lakani said to me that he just needs to get this approved, and then he can do anything he wants with the arborvitaries. So if we come to an agreement, so he's just trying to get this thing done. Originally, I'd supported this concept. It was the concept of a plan where everything was on his side. And I gave him three conditions for my approval, and those were no encroachment, failed. Plan must not create soil erosion or additional stormwater drainage on my property, failed. And my views are not decreased, failed. None of those conditions have been met, and for the last year, he's done absolutely nothing to alleviate his issues. He has resisted holding himself accountable for his poor planning and lack of due diligence, and instead has inundated myself, the homeowners association, and I can't imagine the township, with ideas about shortcuts, compromises, and ultimatums to get what he wants. For these reasons, I request you deny this proposal. Any questions?
So, so did you see the survey that he?
No, you can show me anything.
It's in the packet.
Well, yeah, I briefly looked at it. I mean, the wall's the issue. It's, it's, in order for him to comply, it will encroach on my property. And, you know, I own multiple properties, and when there's an issue around the property line, it's not good when you go to sell. And I cannot have this wall go up and stand the way it is right now.
I have a question. The arborvitae, that, not the newly planted, but the other, was that, is that on your property as well?
There's a couple that are really close, but they are my property. I'm not, I was not there when they put those there, and neither was Dr. Lakani. He's, he bought the house recent, you know, like a year ago, and hasn't moved in. So he didn't do that either, so it is what it is. I, I, I had realized when I bought my house that those were on my property. I, I had realized when I bought my house that those were on my property, and I knew that the neighbor needed them, so I didn't make a stink about it. But when you're doing a project like this, you need to do it right the first time, which he did not do.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Rudy Fisher. I live at six one three nine Dakota Circle. My property is approximately thirty foot from Mr. LaCani's property. Mr. LaCani came before this board in October of last year. It's been ten months, and virtually nothing has been done from the suggestions from the board, and in fact, he's come back asking for more variances, including the pool pump and equipment closer to the house. The pool was operational two years ago. The equipment was at the rear of the lot, and it was concealed by a fence and shrubbery. There is an open violation here of this construction taking place without a permit and does not meet the setback requirements. We're asking you deny this request and have the wall removed. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? All right, so I'll close the public hearing. Let the applicant respond.
As far as the pool fence goes and the arborvitae go, the pool fence has been there for more than eighteen or twenty years, going back. I couldn't find any permit, I couldn't, you know, from the city township, I couldn't find any permit. But in 2015, when Jamie's house was built, so the inspector came for occupation certification, you know, occupancy certificate, he noticed that we had a pool fence, and the pool fence didn't have a quote compliant gate. So he cited the previous owner. The only thing was, and at that time, no one said, take this pool fence down. No one said anything. That pool fence really is on, you know, based on how longstanding it has been there, is de facto the property line or the edge which everyone kind of so far has accepted. And, you know, going into more details about the property, I think would be best addressed in a different forum than here. But this pool fence, the township has been aware, he has been aware for more than ten years from 2015, and the owner put a quote compliant gate, you know, on the west side of the property. So that's one thing. The arborvitae, mature vegetation, you know, has been there for more than fifteen years, even before his house was built. For him to try and, you know, create that as a reason for object, again, sounds unfair. Worst case, I can take the retaining wall down to two feet, matter closed. If that's done, the retaining wall doesn't need any variance. All I need is the variance for the pool fence for the last ten feet. That's it. I'm willing to take the retaining wall down by two feet. So if I take it down, it'll be, you know, last ten feet will be two feet, and the first fifty feet is already two feet. So I'm not even sure why they are fighting about the retaining wall. The crux is the pool fence, and the pool fence is not something of my preference. I would rather not put a pool fence, but it's pool safety court requirement.
So, okay, I think, I think you've, any questions from the board? Thank you for your feedback and your response.
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments. We're now at the motion part of the review of this request.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did stop by this parcel. I did take a look. There are air conditioning units that are already encroaching into his neighbor's property. So are you telling me that the generator was already there in that same spot, and you're just asking for a replacement?
That's correct, yes.
And it was already a permitted generator that we allowed? Do you know of anything? Director Bibby?
As far as I understand, this is a new request for new generator.
Okay, because I didn't see any hookups there when I looked.
No, so the generator which was there, the hookup is there. The generator, one of the tradesperson, he said, you know, he wants to take it for junk and all that. I said, okay, if you want to take it, I'm not going to use it. He wanted to fix it or do something. But there is stuff out there if you want, you know, for the generator, all the hookup. There's two air conditioners which are non-functioning, and next to-
I see a generator plug on the outside of your house.
Right, correct. So there was-
But a generator plug is different than a whole-house generator. Because a generator plug means I can put that generator in I want, and I can have a really long cord.
But under oath of law, and I'm telling you, there was a generator. I just don't have it, but there was a generator.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out if this is new or old, and so in this case, it's, it's great.
It's an old generator, which needs to be replaced. And so next to the air conditioner, I would need a generator. And there's no other place to put it. I can put it somewhere else, but then to run the wiring, break the walls and everything would be impossible to do. And then I would essentially end up with no facility for a house of this kind to be without a generator. There is no other place I can put it. There was already a generator. If you want, I can give you-
There's a generator plug. I have the picture on my phone.
I know, I know, there was a generator.
So a generator plug is different than a whole-house generator.
There was a whole-house generator. There was a, I can get you affidavit from my previous owner if you-
Perfect, that's great.
All right, so I think we can have the discussion on that. So you saw the plug.
So there's-
Yeah, he's saying that there was one there, so we'll just, that's open.
So that's already encroaching?
Yep.
So is that considered, do we already say that that's kind of already non-conforming? So, and these are lakefront lots, they're already close? That's an issue?
The house as such is-
Hold on, yeah, hold on.
He can't interrogate our people, correct?
Yeah, what's that?
He cannot interrogate-
Yeah, so we're all set. So, but this is the, the application, this was, this was a new generator, this wasn't replacing an existing.
I had a phone call with Mr. LaCani before we noticed for this meeting, and him and I had a discussion, we went over each item to clarify. And my clarification is reflected in what has been provided on the screen.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so it's a new one?
It's a new one.
Okay.
As far as we're getting to-
It's not new. We're still standing, it's not new.
Okay.
So then the only thing we're talking about is the retaining wall, retaining wall, that's only the bottom ten feet.
Well, he's, will it take it, take it down to two feet?
So then alleviates the arborvitae, and hopefully then the issue associated with the view for the neighbor, which was one of his big issues.
Yep.
So, because those arborvitae may not even be on his property.
But I still want, want to keep it down because that will cause discussion of the structural integrity of the law, the way that, you know, it does not-
So I'm sorry, hold on, we're still discussing. I'll ask you a question if we need more information for you. Are we good? Okay.
So in line with what you're saying, Chris, Andrea, if, even if he takes it down to two feet, isn't he still going to require various, because the four-foot fence is going to go on top of the two feet, which is now going to make it six feet?
Agreed. There was a conver, I will say there was a conversation with Chris Fox, our building official. Mr. LaCani did meet with him to get direction in terms of what the requirement would be. And the assessment you're making is that a two-foot-high retaining wall still does not satisfy the pool code requirement. So yes, a four-foot or forty-inch-high pool fence would still be required to be located, but it doesn't have to be on that wall.
Exactly.
So it kind of becomes an issue of is the wall necessary?
Necessary, yeah.
So, so I'm trying to lay it out for you.
That's my point.
And I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it appears that the pool fence can be placed closer to the pool, not require variance, and the retaining wall comes down. That's my thoughts on it.
The last ten feet, because everything else, we don't have a, we don't have a say-on. Correct?
No. Is the two feet okay?
You're allowed to have two-foot retaining wall within, within, on the lot line, so-
Okay.
So we can do that. So we can keep, you take it down to two.
If you took it down to two, we could keep it and then move the fence in.
Yep.
And that's where you get around to.
And then that eliminates the screening issue.
Because I did see the photos when we look in the packet that the gentleman talked about from the previous winter. I don't know if you guys had seen that?
Yep.
Where it did show there was no retaining wall, it was just natural topography of the earth with that. So this was somewhat self-created in terms of how we created it as part of our design and aesthetics, so.
So are you, are you okay with taking the wall down to two feet?
You know, if I have-
Because you had mentioned that earlier.
I don't, I prefer not to, but what I'm going to tell you is, it's a matter of one feet. One feet is not coming in the way of anyone. So, no, answer is no.
All right, so your answer is no, okay. Thank you. So we've got, we've got the applicant's revised position.
So again, to clarify, the two-feet retaining wall could exist without any variance whatsoever.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that is correct.
All right. Do you want me to give a shot at this? Chris, you want to try?
Hold on, do you have something very briefly you want to say? You have like fifteen seconds.
The pool fence in the first fifty feet, I'm not asking for, that's already existing. It's the last ten feet is where the issue is.
No, that's not how it works.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead, Carol.
I'm going to give this a shot. With respect to the property located at six oh nine one Franklin Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the water foul and fire feature because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards. Those type of features are appropriate for the neighborhood, will not interfere with the neighbors, and are routinely found within the township. With respect to the request for dimensional variances, all right, I'm going to start with these. Let's do the first one. I guess I'll try to combine them. With respect to the request for the existing retaining wall to exceed two feet in height, I would move to deny that request because the applicant has failed to prove a practical difficulty. Specifically, there is no reason he could not comply with the strict letter of the ordinance, and there would be injustice to the neighbors, and there's no unique circumstances related to property in itself created. I would note, however, that a two-foot retaining wall in its, in the current condition would be permitted under the ordinance. With respect to the ground-mounted mechanical unit pool equipment, as well as the generator, which would encroach respectively six feet into the required setback and three feet into the required setback, I would move to approve those variances because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty by virtue of the placement of the pool in relationship to the property line and the change in topography, and it's not self-created. Do I need a variance for the fence on a two-foot wall? Did I get it all?
There's one for all.
You didn't say about the fence on a two-foot wall. Oh, no, I, okay. With respect to the request to put the four-foot fence on top of the two-foot wall, I would move to deny that variance because you have not demonstrated practical difficulty. There's no reason you can't put the pool fence in full compliance with the ordinance requirements at four feet around the pool. You have not demonstrated anything unique to the property, and that issue is self-created. All that having been said, application for unnecessary permits must be made within, I want to add this too. On the retaining wall, I don't know whether the arborvitae exist on your property or not after listing this. So let me say this. I'm going to require as a condition of this approval that there be a row of arborvitae along that retaining wall. And if any of those are to die, it's required that you replace them and that that wall remains screened at all times for the neighbors, okay? If approved, application for unnecessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing retaining wall subject to bringing it down. And with the ones that are denied, you'll have to remove it, okay? So you're going to have to remove the additional two feet on the retaining wall within thirty days after approval, the minutes.
Support. I have a motion of support. Any discussion?
A couple things. So for the arborvitae, one of the neighbors, one of their complaints was it blocks their view. So us leaving the additional arborvitae or mandating them, it impacts the additional view that they would have. So allowing a four-foot or six-foot arborvitae in that last ten feet will inhibit the gentleman's view. So I just want to know if that's our intent, because it will impact their view, which is one of the biggest complaints they had.
Well, we have talked before about screening to the height of the thing, so I like the high arborvitae from the house down to a certain point, but as it gets lower, I think it should be lowered to some kind of small evergreen-type bush, you know, a permanent bush that covers, you know, to the height of the retaining wall and cover it that way.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Can I speak?
Yes.
I just want to comment, and normally I wouldn't give this much input, I'm just trying to help the board.
Well, you're thinking about enforcement.
Well, I'm thinking about the fact that I'm hearing that the arborvitae are not on his property.
That's what I-
And that's my concern is, he did provide the survey. The survey has demonstrated that the retaining wall and the other structures, he's shown the setbacks, but we've not been given proof via survey that those arborvitae are on his property. So that's my concern.
But I thought his survey shows that they are.
The wall's nine inches from the property line.
Oh, see, it looks like the trees are on it.
So I don't think there's any way they could be on, on his property.
Well, then we got a problem.
Yes, we do.
Because that wall has to be screened somehow.
And so does the generator. So when I've visited the site, you can still see, his survey was nice enough to provide a survey stake, which is in the middle of the arborvitae, which would mean that it's shared between two neighbors, and that is a walkway. So how would he be able to screen those mechanicals when it is seven feet, and that's the walkway they use? So like, that's, that's another problem or hurdle we have to overcome.
Yeah, because all the mechanicals do have to be screened to the height of the, no, you can't.
So-
Would you?
Well, wait, their pool equipment's going to be below a deck.
Yeah, so that, and it's below a deck and below the retaining wall, that should be screened based on those two items.
Well, I think we allow it below the deck without screening.
I think the retaining wall will do that, but-
Yeah, right. But is for the pool equipment?
They're eight feet off the lot line.
Yeah, they're still eight feet off the lot line. They can get screening in there.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's below grade. So when you would look at the picture, there's a retaining wall, it is at grade level, so it is already behind the retaining wall.
Screened, but isn't it higher than the retaining wall?
No. The pool equipment will be lower than the retaining wall.
Not at that point.
Okay, all right, well, then we don't need screening.
For that, but you do for the-
For the cool equipment.
Yeah, I really, in this case, if you kind of look at it, I think screening causes more complications, and it hurts the neighbor's sightline, so you don't do it.
All right, I will remove the condition for the arborvitae screening then.
On the retaining wall?
Yes, that was the only place that existed.
But there has to be screening on the generator.
But you just, but, but the generator's under the deck.
No, 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 no. Pool equipment is under the deck. Generator, generator is next to the home, next to the air conditioning units. I'm sorry, Carol. I'll take the link of this.
You confused me on that. Okay, yes, that needs to be screened to the height of the equipment.
We'll just say, and we have to figure it out.
Correct, correct. You got that now? Don't ask me to repeat that motion.
Let's clarify it.
Well, we're still discussing it, so I was saying maybe it would, would be helpful to repeat it, just so that- Well, because quite a bit of time has passed, and there've been some comments to-
You're not serious.
But you're changing it, right? So, so you're, you're taking out the screening for the retaining wall.
And I'm adding the screening for the mechanical.
Okay. Is the staff clear on this motion?
They'll be able to decipher it.
We got it. No fence on the retaining wall, two-foot hall, two-foot wall is allowed.
Exactly.
I write, no evergreen screening on the wall, evergreen screening for the new mechanical generator. And I'm going to be a lot more quiet for the rest of the meeting.
No, it's fine.
And no variance for the four-foot fence.
All right, so we have a motion, support, and clarification. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request, as modified by our motion, is granted. So the staff will work with you to answer any questions you have. You really don't, so I've given you more time. You can talk to the staff now. So let's, let's call the next item. Item one P one seven eight one South Gulf Ridge Drive.
Hi, Tom.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here on an August evening.
It's our pleasure to serve.
Thank you. My name is Tom Ryan. I'm an attorney for Mr. Bashi, who's the property owner at the one seven eight one South Gulf Ridge Drive, Bloomfield Township, Michigan. My office address is two zero five five Orchard Lake, Michigan, four eight three two zero. We are here seeking three, one permission for an at-grade deck, which prior was not non-conforming. It was in violation. So we've changed the dimensions of the deck to make it conforming. It is now within the setbacks of the rear and side yard. So these are customarily found in Bloomfield Township at-grade decks. So we are asking for permission to put that at-grade deck in our, in the backyard. Secondly, we have two seasonal pergolas, which we are attempting to allow on a six-month basis from, from May to October. They are nine feet tall. They are approximately, thank you, six feet from the rear property line. My client's been in the property for a couple of years. She has put arborvitae around the perimeter of the property, including the backyard. The arborvitae are not quite to the eight-feet area, but they're getting closer. We do not have agreement from the back lot owner, who is not a member of the association, but we have talked to him and said that if you granted our variance, we would, in the, in the area where there's perhaps a gap in between his property vegetation and ours, we would take out the arborvitae and put in more to include and make up more dense in that area so that it would not be seen. Again, these are for six months. They're accessory to the pool. They face the pool, and we're asking for a variance to do that. And lastly, we are seeking a permission and a variance for the, there's a koi pond, which is on the property, which is allowed. And we, you can see that the property, the, the two units are screened. They're just recently put in arborvitae there. There's also arborvitae, which should be on the west side of the property. We have the property owner here who's filed a letter, who is right adjacent to this equipment, who can, she can't see it. They can't hear it. They have no objection to it. We can't put it immediately adjacent to the home, but we'd like to encroach in the ten-feet area by seven feet to place these two pond filters there. And again, they, they are not seen or heard by anyone. And so we're asking for a variance to place those, that pond equipment there also. Please, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I just have one question, Tom. You keep referring to these pergolas as temporary, but they're not. They're permanent structures. You may only use them part of the year, but they're permanent structures.
They are, but we're, I'm just, our use is going to be six months and taken down at end of October.
What do you mean by take, you're going to, you're going to remove them?
Yes, we're, we saw them in the garage and put them up in, in, in May. So they're going to, not going to be there for six months of the winter or fall or winter.
Any other questions? So I'd like to over the public hearing. Is anyone like to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Alfredo Qasab. I live at forty-five fifty Coach Maker. I am the neighbor to the south of the subject home. So you can see my house there. It's forty-five fifty. The pergolas are right along the, our property line. Our, so Mr. Bashi did move in about, I think about two years ago. There was a lot of construction at the house. They put some decking. They removed all the lawn, all the green space. I mean, you just see no lawn there, right? And he installed the arborvitae lines, which have not filled in. Okay. Then he filed a petition, I believe it was around twenty twenty-three, for the deck. And I believe the second photo that may have been shown showed the decking. It would be, it was a wood decking, maybe like the second photo that you used. That might be it. That, there was a petition that he previously filed to have that approved. There's something very similar to it. It was heard by this board in, I believe, late twenty twenty-three. It was denied, and I believe he was ordered to take it down. I've spoken with Mr. Ryan about it. For the record, I happen to be an attorney as well. So I practice in real estate, so I've dealt with Mr. Ryan.
Against you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've dealt with Mr. Ryan. He's a gentleman. No issues there. But I'm respectfully opposing this because the decking was ordered to be taken down two years ago. I don't believe anybody from, I've tried, I've called many times to the code enforcement officer at the township, never got a call back. Mr. Ryan assures me that that was removed, and this is something different. I'm not sure that it is. I do believe it might still be within the sixteen-feet rear setback. So I'm opposing that. With respect to the pergolas, I am vehemently opposing that. They are very visible from my yard. There was a party last summer, I believe in twenty twenty-four. And they put some curtains on the back of the pergolas. And, you know, if you want to have a party, no issue. Knock yourself out. But, you know, that's where people are gathering and walking. They're, they're right on the property line. Again, no issue. You can walk your property, but just when there's a structure there and that's the feature, I mean, that's part of the purpose of, of having no structures within sixteen feet, among many other reasons, I'm sure. Anyway, so I, I am opposing that. With respect to the koi pond, pond filters, no objections there. They, they don't affect the rear setback. I would, would like to speak very briefly, haha, with respect to the elements that are required for the granting of a variance. And I don't think any of the elements exist. You've got, you can't have the issue be self-created. When you come in here and you say, hey, there's an existing thing, and I want a variance for it, you can't have done the thing for which you now seek approval, which was done here. He put those pergolas up, and now he's saying, hey, they're existing structures. Please let me have them. You can't do that. You fail element one, right? There's no uniqueness issue here. The only problem he seems to have is that he doesn't have enough land to do what he wants to do. I'm sorry about that. He, he chose to buy this property. You know, we're all subject to the same rules. I can't do what he's done back there, not that I'd want to any, excuse me, anyway. So there's no uniqueness element met. The public interest, I, I don't think it's reasonable or appropriate relative to the use of, you know, property in the community. Okay? Is there an unnecessary hardship? No, he created it. There is no hardship. Again, the only hardship is he doesn't have enough land to do what he wants. And there are no practical or exceptional difficulties. He can move the pergolas further back, sixteen feet. So I, I understand Mr. Ryan's comment today that, you know, we've had discussions and, and he's offered to maybe move the trees a little bit closer. But it's a single line of trees. He didn't even do an offset, you know? When, when you do like a little triangle, so it was upside-down triangles, right? So you have offset trees, so you have a full barrier. He didn't even try that. It was just a single line. Two years later, these trees still have a gap because they were planted a little bit too far apart. So again, I respect Mr. Ryan. I wish Mr. Bashi the best. But for the pergolas and the decking, I'm opposing it. For the pond filters, no issue there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
How you doing? Paul Pasternak, eighteen seventy-nine Gulf Ridge Drive South. Talking on behalf of Wabique Homewares Association. So this has been going on for quite a while, as you all know, a couple of years at least. It's been postponed many times. We've, we've met with Mr. Bashi and at the property, tried to come with some resolutions. We sent a note about a month or two ago about the pool filters. And it stated, you know, that we, we don't believe in the lines of the setbacks that should, they should be there. We sent that letter, I believe, to you guys also. And then a week after that, he started building the deck that was there to hold those pool filters. That deck wasn't there about a month ago. The pool filters were not in that location about a month ago. They were sitting in his driveway for about two years. Also, if you looked at the pictures, they said the pool filters, the neighbor didn't hear any noise. I'm not sure how that's possible when they're not hooked up. How would the neighbor even know that? As far as the previous speaker said, right, a lot of these things were self-created, right? The, the homeowners' association in our, in our covenants do not allow accessory structures. These were not brought to the homeowners' association for approval until after we found out about them. We went to Mr. Bashi, or the previous architectural approval, went to Mr. Bashi, explained to him, gave him the covenants, said, you got to get approval for this stuff, right? And it's a constant thing that he just keeps doing stuff without approval. So that's our stance. We, we, we do not see that any of this is, meets any of the requirements for a ZPA variance.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? And say anything that hasn't been said before.
Hi, excuse me. My name's Anna Gerlins. I'm the neighbor at seventeen eighty-five Gulf Ridge Drive. So I'm adjacent to Mr. Bashi's property. And I just want to say that I don't hear his filters. They don't bother me. I don't see them. And I'm right, I was, my house is really like literally next door. So filter's not a problem at all. In terms of the view and everything else, ever since, I, I've lived in the property since two thousand nine. So I've seen many neighbors, you know, many people, many owners, probably three past owners, come and go. And I can say that what Mr. Bashi has done to the property in terms of taking care of it and beautifying it has never been the way it is right now. He has put in so much care and just like aesthetic upgrade to the whole neighborhood as a whole. I, I was just like constantly impressed by what he's doing. So that's, that's not a bother. None of it is. And then the attorney that lives behind Mr. Bashi, is my understanding, he mentioned a party and the pergola is bothering him. It's never been a bother. I don't see, whatever you see is gorgeous. If you pull up the pictures of the property like you showed, it's, look at it. There's just, there's nothing wrong with it. It's, it's amazing. The aesthetics are beautiful. It was just neglected before. People would just like live a couple of years in the property, move out. It was overgrown. The back was dilapidated. There was weeds, and it's just, you can't even compare. It looks like a totally different, beautified, updated house. And I'm, I'm happy to be a neighbor, honestly.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? Name the address.
Dave Lepley, seventeen seventy-eight Gulf Ridge Drive South, directly across from Steve. I look at his house every day. I don't think that this is the real issue. I think the issue is that Steve has just designed a very unique look for his house. He has what looks like a zen rock garden instead of grass that everybody else has. And the neighborhood is just very conservative, and they don't like it. And so they're just against him in general. I, I like what he's done. I look at it every day. I share the same comments as Anna. I'm happy to be his neighbor. He's put a lot of investment and beauty into the house. And I don't think any of this is a real issue.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ryan, if you'd like to respond to the comments?
Mr. Chair, just briefly. So relative to Anna, I know it was stated that the pool filters haven't worked for two years because they were disconnected when the township sent the notice of violation. But she's been there nine years. So if you want to call her back up, she has heard the pool filters when they've been operational, and she's not been able to hear them and, and she can't see them. So that's, that's the direct next-door neighbor, who's also a member of the association. As to the, the issue about the variance for the pergolas, if you can look at this, this picture on the left there, you can see the topography. He, he, they run out of real estate. I mean, the, the wall that, that, from the pool, the, the walkway around the pool, which was pre-existing, there's not that much space to move. If he could move the pergolas up ten feet, he would do that. But they wouldn't be, they'd be over the wall that's there where the walkway is. So that's really the only place they can go. And we will do our best to mitigate relative to the, relative to the, to this backyard neighbor, whom is, you know, I understand is, you know, is objecting. And lastly, respectfully to him, is that we did measure. I mean, there was, there was, you were here, I think, in October of twenty-three. The deck was all around the pond, and that was not, not allowed. And it was told to be changed. And so all that other decking was removed. And the only decking that remains is on the, is on the north side now of the pond, which is not, is, is conforming, meets all the setbacks. Side and rear yard. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Ryan? Or any comments you'd like to share during the discussion portion before we make our motion?
I guess I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Do you know how far, I'm going to address the applicant or his lawyer. Is that okay?
Uh, Mr. Ryan, could you respond to a few questions?
Sure.
Thank you. Do you know how much space he has between where the proposed area for the pergola is and that retaining wall? As some of the objections are, is the setback.
Correct.
Is there, and you make a good point associated with topography that was pre-existing.
Correct.
So how much room is there between where we have those pergolas and the front of that retaining wall? Obviously, you don't want to be on the retaining wall, which makes sense for safety. But there appears to be more room there than where we currently are.
Well, and I, this is picture B that, that I have. Yeah, maybe if you don't mind. So you can see that, that it, it slopes up some, and then it's flat. So I, I don't think there's but a couple of feet where those pergolas could be moved forward before it gets to the slope toward the ledge, toward the pool. I mean, there's not that much room there. There's maybe a few feet, but, I mean, I haven't measured it respectfully. But you can just see that it's.
And actually, one of your things, I think seventeen feet, if I'm not mistaken. If you go back, it showed edge of the property line to the front of that retaining wall was seventeen feet.
Yeah.
Which means to.
Yeah, I get, I understand.
We're trying to find this.
Yes, sir.
Work together, right? And I know that's what we're trying to do here, but.
Right. So you're, I think the front, front of the pergola is seventeen feet from the lot line. So it's just outside the sixteen feet necessary.
That's not the way I read it. Does anyone else read it the same way?
It's.
Well, see, it's seventeen feet to that ledge.
Yeah, to the ledge.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's got to be, and the pergola has to be sixteen feet from the lot line.
Correct.
You're, you're right about it. It'd be a one foot.
Pergle, because right now we're six feet from the neighbor's parcel, which is one of the neighbors that is objecting.
Six point eight, yes, sir.
May I say something?
No, we've closed the public hearing.
So to answer your question, I don't know how much further it could be moved up, is all, is my point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I guess the only, I guess discussion is, I don't have a problem. The most adjacent neighbor does not have a problem with where the koi pond filter stuff is. So that, they are the most impacted by it. And again, I did view this site and went there personally. I did see that the screening was adequate. I personally didn't even see it until I went around the corner, not going on your property, but going up to that fence. Well, I went on your property and I go in your backyard. So, um, so I, I can attest that he did do that, which is good. And I couldn't see either from the road or couldn't see it, which would be our requirement anyways. So that was an effort that was done. And the neighbor doesn't seem to have a problem with it. Now, the HOA is a difference, but the people that are most impacted by it, across the street, the person who would see it, as well as the person adjacent, are not being impacted by that request.
By the, by the visual.
By the visual. And from the noise, the most impacted neighbor did not say anything.
Well, if you took the pergola away, you could have all the chairs there and still have a, a party in that location.
Correct. Yeah, I was still more on just the pool filters, not where the pergola is. So that, I have no problem with where the filter is and that. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I'm up for what other people on the board have with the pergola.
I agree with the ground-mounted mechanical units and stuff and filter, but the pergola. I mean, it's.
It's close.
Yeah. We wouldn't approve that.
Well, that's what we're voting on, so.
Right.
So you're saying you would not approve the pergola in, in its current location?
No.
I guess I'm curious why they need two pergolas.
I guess I'm curious why they need two pergolas.
Is that, is that our, it doesn't, if we...
Yeah, I mean...
If we let them have one, it doesn't matter. You could have one big one. That's, that's his, that's his choice. It doesn't matter if he, right, it's...
He's got a lot of friends, so...
Yeah, but still, I mean, it's, it's an additional structure.
Right.
I don't know that we'd approve a structure that took up that whole area.
Correct.
And it's such, with such an encroachment.
Right.
I mean, you could have seats and umbrellas.
Right, and you're, you're saying where the other pergola is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I have a problem with, just because of the encroachment of it, and...
It's close.
It's very close, and any objection of the adjacent neighbor.
There's a lot, lot going on in this.
And if they're willing to even screen it, that didn't seem to be enough for the neighbor, because it's not like that was the only objection, which again, if we could get to additional screening, but the neighbor, when he spoke, was also about noise, which again, whether you're six feet or eight feet, the noise is closer, right? Whether we're 10 feet, the noise projects, right?
Right.
So while the applicant has said that they would be willing to do more, that doesn't alleviate all the concerns we have here.
Maybe with the noise situation, I mean, there is not much greenery to absorb any of the noise. I mean, would he be open to adding any greenery in there? I don't know if we'd require it, but, just an idea.
I guess I have one concern that I just have to express. He's dealt with us before, he knows he has to come in and get approval before doing things. And even after we denied the last variance, he just proceeded to move forward and put things in he wanted, without checking with the planning department or coming to us. And I, I just want to say I'm not happy about that. I think the record should reflect that.
We did deny this back two years ago.
It's funny that you brought that up, because I did have that thought too, but especially because of the encroachment, I mean, if it...
Right. You're talking about the pergolas now.
Right, if it was just a permission, you didn't have to worry about the encroachment, but the fact of that, and we've been through this...
And there's a history.
A history, and we talked about it.
Yep. And something, there's been a lot of discussions with council.
And, and, or, or discussing it with the adjacent neighbor, just to, I mean, even something like that would, would actually, I would have a little bit better feeling if you had a discussion with the adjacent neighbor about, I'm about to put these pergolas up, and even though you should come to the township first, because of that encroachment.
I have a question. Is that a flat spot from that retaining wall to the front of the pergola? Is that all flat?
I think it showed that it's sloped a little bit.
I think you showed the picture, it was sloped down.
But the question is, do...
Feet, probably, still have enough path to get by it. That looks like there could be eight or 10 feet there, if they raised that wall.
You know the variance for the wall?
You need to know the dimensions, and this is where we went last time, where we needed, we didn't have enough information.
Right.
Because if we had those dimensions, you could answer that question. It's, it's hard to really tell.
Just looks in plan like there's more space. It looks like if those are 12 feet deep, that's gotta be at least eight feet to the, to that position of the wall.
It still would encroach the setback.
Correct. It still would, just not as, not as much.
Not as much.
Which then may be able to provide some alleviation to the neighbor about noise, and then provide the applicant the proper trees and placement to help alleviate the sightlines that the neighbor was talking about. I don't know if that would, I'm saying that would provide that opportunity.
And then what about the wood deck? Does anybody? Because it seems like maybe the issue is the pergolas. You don't approve the pergolas, and...
Does the deck just require permission?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So the deck, the deck and the pond filter, I think it seems like a consensus on, probably not on the pergolas, so maybe we try a motion along that line, see who could support it. Anybody up for that?
Mr. First.
Sounds great, I'll try this.
Okay.
Would promote the ground mounted mechanical unit as well as the existing deck. In regards to the appeal at 1781 South Gulf Ridge Drive for the accessory structure for the deck as well as the pond filters, I request that the applicant be approved as submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance to the law because the size of the accessory structure is compliant with the adjoining properties based on the fact that it is with, within the set, it's, it's not within the setbacks, it gives us 16 feet. So based on that, I move that that be approved, and then at this time, I...
Mechanical units.
Huh?
You might want to add mounted mechanical units.
Well, it's messed up here, it's not the right one. I think it's messing me up.
Right. You could just include ground mounted mechanical units.
Yeah, and the ground mounted mechanical units for the pond, pond filter as well. Now that one will require a dimensional variance, so we'll go there. So in regards to the appeal at 1781 South Gulf Ridge Drive for the setback and location variance for the ground mounted mechanical units, I request, I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance stricter, the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because you have a unique top, topography of it and closer to your pond. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because they happen to come out here, and we're here on your behalf to explain that they don't see it and they don't hear it. Unique surface status of the property has been demonstrated because, again, the Koi Pond, and, yeah, so based on that, obviously, those two things will have to be completely screened 360, and all necessary permits will have to be done within five business days. And I move that we deny the request for the existing pergolas. Do I have to go through the whole thing on that one too?
Well, yep. Why don't, why don't we do that separately?
Perfect.
Yeah. So, so we have a motion?
I'll support that, support.
So I have a motion and support any discussion on the motion to approve. All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two items are approved.
So, if I may, would you, would...
So we're not, not done yet?
I was going to ask you to entertain a motion to table a pergola, so maybe we can check out the dimensions, and maybe we can do something about that and come back at a later time after we talk.
I would object to it, the, the public hearing's already closed, the board has already taken consideration, I had a motion, it's already been started, and I respectfully oppose this.
Well, we can, we can move to table on our own initiative as well, so.
That's all I'm saying, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So, so, Mr. Ryan, so you're saying your client's willing, and I don't know what the homeowner is, but, but he's willing to make some concessions or try and...
We, yeah, we've had discussion, we're not there yet, I mean, we won't get there, but we're willing to take the comments of the board in order and see if we can move it somehow or do whatever, to make it better for him and for us.
I respectfully disapprove of your hearing. We're here, and I understand the board has a right to table it itself, but we're here.
Well, and the other, the other thing we can do is make a motion to deny.
Right, and he can work something out and then come back. Come back, that's exactly what I'm thinking. It can be denied, and you can come up with another plan and come back.
It has been a long time, so...
We have a comment.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So it's very fortunate that the, the property owner made the pergolas portable, so it would be possible for them to remove the pergolas.
He'll be storing, storing them early, sure.
Right, and then they can come back to us with a proposal that we could consider in terms of the future location. Just a, just an idea.
That's an excellent point, okay. So I, I would, I'd be okay with a motion to deny, for all those reasons, because he can store it, and he can work with the neighbor, and then come up with a suitable...
That's permission and dimension.
Compromise.
Yes.
And appear above for us again, and I'm guessing would be faster than eight months.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 1781 South Gulf Ridge Drive for the accessory structure for the temporary pergolas. I approve this request be denied as submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate compliance with Section 42-76 standards, because the use, the location of the accessory structure will, will hinder and discourage adjacent property owners due to its proximity to the rear property line, and doesn't have adequate screening.
Support.
I have a motion to support any discussion.
Just a comment, and we're going to have it removed within 30 days of approval, the minutes that you...
Yes, based on that, we will have to have that pergola, which happens to be modular, removed from the structure within 30 days, and the applicant can try to resubmit based on different things with his neighbor.
Any further discussion? All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request on the pergola denied.
Thank you for your time, enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Calling item 2P, 1262 Winchcomb.
I just want to make a quick comment to the audience. We have 20 items on our agenda tonight, and so I do want you to know that we read any comments that are submitted by any residents, we, we're given them and we review them. So we've got a lot of items to try to get through, and it's, you know, we've only gone through two in about an hour and a half. So if you can be really brief in your comments and know that we have read what you've submitted, if you sent a letter or an email or something like that.
Thank you, Carol. Please proceed.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Mike Medalia. I live at 1262 Winchcomb, and I'm interested in replacing an old rickety metal shed with a new shed. It's, you know, off the shelf Costco shed, professionally installed. Yeah, and, I guess...
So, from the, from the pic, okay, great succinct reason. From the pictures, it looks like you can see it from the road, are you going to screen it?
Yes, yes.
So it's going to be screened from public?
Yeah, and, so...
That's a good answer.
If you see the, see the, the green circles, they would represent arborvitae. I have a row of, like, it's an old Google Maps, yeah, there you go, there's the rendering.
Any questions from the board?
The only question is that we're, it's not four arborvitae, it's enough so you can't see it from the road, correct?
Yes.
So if it's four, if it's six, if it's 12, you just won't see it from the road.
It'd be, yeah, whatever it takes.
Perfect, that sounds like a great answer.
So imagine looking at this picture, I wouldn't be able to see the shed with the arborvitae you planted.
Correct, correct.
The height.
You can only buy them so big, so they have to grow.
What, no, I want to, sorry, so I want to clarify, yes, you can only buy them so big, but you're, you're buying a 13-foot tall shed, so you have to provide...
A 13-foot tall? Sure.
It's a great answer.
Not a great answer.
We're rolling now.
We're building some momentum. So I'll open this to the public.
Again, I, I'm new to this, so...
It's perfect, that's why we're having this great dialogue.
Doing a great job for a new... Open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Closed public hearing, be back for a motion.
I would like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 1262 Winchcomb Drive. I move the request be approved as submitted based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-76 standards, because the size of the accessory structure is compliant with the adjoining neighbors based on the fact that he is not impeding or providing setback issues. Based on that, all necessary permits must be made within one year of the proposed accessory structure, and all permits must be made, must be obtained prior to construction. Additional ever screens, evergreen screenings will be required and must be the height of the structure at time of planting.
Support.
I motion and support any discussion?
If it's 13 feet, you have to make a 13-foot tree.
Okay. All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So it's a big moment, we've reached agenda item number one.
So let's go. Is the applicant ready?
4600 Charing Cross. Hi, my name is Mike Coopis, I represent 4600 Charing Cross, that's my personal home. I'm also representing my neighbor, Jack. His address is 44530 Charing Cross Road. There's two items...
Well, hold on, so I, so the next two items relate to each other, because they're, you know...
You read the materials, so your neighbor's not coming to present on that, the next item, you're, you're kind of doing both, okay.
Yes, actually, completely new information, just now I got a chance to meet the president and vice president of Bloomfield Estates Improvement Association, they're, they're here, I just met him for the first time, and there's bylaws that they operate under on locations I wasn't aware of. So we just had a brief discussion, and I'd like to meet with them, so I would ask if I could table just this part of today's, which is related to the sheds, so I can meet with them and see what their, I know what the city has...
So, so you're, I guess you're tabling both items then, you're tabling one and two?
Well, only the shed.
I wasn't going to table the gates.
Okay, you want to do the gates, but you're tabling the sheds. Okay, all right, so proceed.
Okay, so let's move to the gates. I was here before, I don't know if you guys remember me, but my builder had overbuilt the gates, and I was kind of stuck with them, so I had, you guys basically said it was a variance at the time that was approved, they, they went above and over that, so you asked me to go back to the drawing board, and that's exactly what I did. I went back to the drawing board, and I had new drawings put out for, to you guys. One of the drawings is basically, I'm probably, I don't know if I'm using the right words, compliant to four-foot gates is what you guys would approve. The other drawing is four foot six inches. The only, I was able to take the, the pillars on each side, they're compliant at five foot, that's what was, I guess, was in the original drawings that you guys accepted. So that is now five feet, those are done. And the only reason they're five feet, it's not because I tore them down and rebuilt them, I had to rip out the entire, I had a failing driveway, so since I saw you guys last, I had to rip out the entire driveway and redo all of the, the land structure around it because of the way the water was flowing, it was cracking up the concrete, and it was taking a lot of the dirt down the, my driveway dropped significantly from my house. So by redoing all of that landscape, rebuilding it up, putting trees in, building up the land, those pillars are now five feet. There's, I didn't have to tear them down. The gate itself, though, is currently five feet, and the variance I'm requesting is if I could get them to four foot six inches, so an additional six inches over the four feet, and that's only because of the slope of the property. The pillars are actually high, where the gate is in the driveway, it's kind of sinks down, so it looks aesthetically good right now, but it does, it's obviously aesthetics, I don't think is enough to get an approval, but aesthetically, it looks good right now, but if I could reduce it to four foot six inches, I think it will look decent enough where it won't look like a stair step. But if I, if you guys don't think I can have that, I'll, I'll be satisfied with the, with the four feet, and I'll, and I'll get that done.
What did we notice?
The notice was for a four and a half foot high, 16-foot long driveway gates. So you wouldn't know it go above that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public, if you'd like to comment on this, closed public? Questions or motion? So it was noticed for 4.5 feet for the, for the piers?
Yeah, that's before.
No, for the years, for the gate.
Oh, the piers are at five.
Yeah.
So what, what's at 4.5?
The gate.
Like he said, he's asking for four and a half.
Oh, you said four, you said six.
Actually, I may have confused, so the pillars were too high, based on tomography and all the land. So they're, they're, they're at four feet now, which, I'm sorry, they're at five feet, which is where they're supposed to be.
Okay.
The gate is currently at five feet, and what I think the code was is four feet for a gate in height, that is the code. So I was asking for a variance for four foot six inches.
Oh, four feet six inches, okay. All right, so we can give him that.
Maybe.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, according to what we noticed, if you're feeling legit.
Right, 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 yes. It was noticed that...
Yeah, that was confusing with the .5.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, with the, the piers being five feet and the gate, just slightly under that would kind of make sense to me, you know?
And when you look at the scale of the house, like...
Exactly.
Yes.
It, it matches, it still provides the ability to see the home and see the scale of the home, doesn't look, you know, obstructive to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
It does kind of conform to that area of our township, where it seems that people have those bigger lots, want a little bit more privacy associated with the property. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, and I like that it's, it's setback from the road, and there's a lot of landscaping in there, so it doesn't...[1752.25] in there, so it doesn't stick out.
It looks good.
I'm ready to make a motion if. Did you pull?
Yeah, I did, I did pull.
Oh, you did? Oh, I understand. Did they?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm quick draw.
Okay. All right, with respect to the request at 4600 Charing Cross Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the piers and gate because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. Now I'm going to deal with the dimensions in the next motion, okay? The gates and, or the gates and the piers are compatible with the neighborhood and don't have any negative impact on surrounding properties. With respect to the request for the dimensional variances for the piers and gate, I would move to approve those because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. And that's been shown by virtue of the size of the property, the location of the property, which is very unique, and the fact that the gates are set back from the road and heavily landscaped. There's no injustice to neighboring properties and it's not self-created. I would note, however, that the maximum height of the piers is to be five feet and the height of the gate will be four-and-a-half feet, 4.6 inches. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for existing piers and gate. And I'm not going to require additional screening because I think the landscaping looks good at this point.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Are we going to have to make a motion to table his shed?
Yes. Yeah, can I make a note about that? When you're meeting with them, just my thoughts, I'm looking, I don't see why you can't meet your setback requirement. You've got the property back there to do it, so keep that in mind. Okay.
So I need a motion to.
I would like to make a motion that we're going to be tabling.
Discussion for items one and two.
For item one, which is 46, 4600 Charing Cross, I'd like to make a motion that we table the shed.
Support.
Because you're discussing both.
Yeah, I'm representing, yeah, since the very beginning.
Okay.
Signed some papers and I think I submitted them.
Yeah, they're, they're linked together.
So I'm, I'm tabling the first one, am I tabling in one motion for both?
Yeah.
And then I would also like to make a motion that we're going to be tabling two, which is 4530 Charing Cross.
Support. All right, so I motion support to table items one and two, so the applicant can discuss the sheds of the homers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're tabled until the end of the meeting, good luck.
Thank you.
Table it to the end of the meeting? Did you say table to the end of the meeting?
Well, excuse me, because you want to come back tonight? Are you, are you going to come back?
Oh, I thought it was next meeting. No, he said that.
I wasn't going to come back tonight only because.
Oh, okay.
I apologize that it's the next meeting.
Or the next, next.
Yeah. No, that's fine.
All right. That's good.
That's what I thought, okay.
It's our step after.
Okay. So might take a little more time than tonight. All right, calling item three, 1419 Sandringham Way.
Hi, guys.
Good evening.
Yeah, you like the action fence?
We know you.
4300 Delamere Court, Royal Oak. This is my customer Greg.
My name is Greg Shulte, owner of 1419 Sandringham Way, homeowner. Nice to meet you, thank you for your time tonight.
We're looking for a dimensional variance for the, I believe it's four feet of fence on the right side of the house, going up that side yard, because he lives on a corner lot. I believe everything else is within recommendations.
Okay, any questions from the board? Open this to the public. I think Kathy's here to comment on this.
Good evening, Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association. Our board did review this proposal. We supported the fence in the current location, it does meet our requirements. I know it jets a little bit out into the secondary frontage, but there is a covered porch that we needed to get that fence away from so you couldn't climb over the fence too easily. So we do support the variance. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. So with regard to the permission request or the appeal at 1419 Sandringham Way for the, the proposed fence, I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of this accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. With regard to the dimensional variance at the same address, I, I move that this variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that this is a tight lot and there are no injustices to the adjoining neighbors. The unique circumstances of this property are given in the sense that a fence there makes sense and this is not self-created. So if the application for all, all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation.
Support. I motion support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
So calling item five, 3931 Oak Hills Drive.
Good evening, Jason from JCP Design and Build on behalf of the Shawzes at 3931 Oak Hills Drive. We are requesting a pergola and fireplace area designed fully, fully within the required setbacks and to the height limits. Also a spa that's 12 inches out of the ground that will waterfall into the pool. The plans indicate full evergreen screening and no features will be seen from the public.
Thanks very much. Any questions?
I, I do have one question. So on your plan, your pergola is going to be completely screened?
Yes, there's hedging behind it and then there's actually double hedge on the property
To the height of the structure?
How tall is the hedge?
On the property line's 10 feet and then touching the pergola is starting at eight feet.
That isn't installed correct, currently, correct?
That's correct, it's not.
Okay, perfect.
Open this to the public. Like to comment on this item? Come forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening, thank you for the time. My name's Dave Robinson, I'm the president of the Oakland Hills Country Club Subdivisions Association. And we did submit a letter, so you've seen that.
Yes.
And just a little context, we were originally notified about the plan back on the 23rd of July and the plan was just to install a generator. And then we received another modification for the generator pool landscape, landscape on the outdated application form that we have with the association. So I returned it back to Mr. Lerman, Lerman Company and asked them to complete our application form. And on the application form, can you show this? If you can show it, I mean, basically all it says is that we require those that are 4X or heavy to send it into the board for the board to review and within 90 days before the project starts. And we did get a folded plan, we did get a site plan, but the documentation that we request, which is a four-page document, all we got was page two. I sent another request back on the 29th asking for all four pages of the document to be completed. Received the plans and again, just page two of our document. And in that document, it says ZBA variance required and the, the application said no. Data the ZBA variance granted and it says homeowners association granted permission, which we did not do. Communicated again with Lerman and we've gotten more site plans that now include an extended driveway, sports court, the pergola, the outdoor kitchen, pool and spa, pool equipment, stone pavers, and the generator again. So again, all we got back is page two of our four-page document. And what we're asking for is to, we did not approve this particular plan and we're asking for, again, him to submit it with the entire plans for the board to review. Our next board meeting is September 8th. And we do have some concerns about the, the additional plans, which is the extended driveway. And our neighbors, they've already sent some documentation about it. And so we're concerned and in support of our neighbors about water issues on the south side and sites lines on the north side.
None of those are before's today.
I'm sorry?
I said none of those items are before.
Additional plans which are more and more project, or more and more.
Extensive than this.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Hi, Dave.
Good evening.
I'm Natalie Schroder, I live at 3949 Oak Hills Drive. I am directly west of the property we're discussing. If possible, can we get the rendering put up? No, of the property, yes. So that, briefly to what Dave had mentioned, Mr. Robinson, is the, the plan is labeled differently here than what is provided recently. I will stick to what we're talking about today.
That's all we consider, is this, that's all.
I do have a picture of what was submitted with new labeling, but we won't, okay.
That will only confuse us, so we don't want that.
Gotcha. So my concern is the lack of screening surrounding the proposed accessory structure, specifically on the west property line. The township requires pergolas to be fully screened 12 months of the year. The builder's application, of which I have here, states that the rear, rear yard will be fully screened and the surrounding landscaping will provide a privacy buffer for the neighbors on the east and west property lines. If we look, the pergola is that dark or the big yellow square. Immediately to the right, which is the west, is the proposed 80-foot concrete driveway extension that runs up to my property line. This would make the structure completely visible from my property. On the proposed renderings, I do see a property buffer on the east side of the property, but I don't see one on the west side. Considering the size of this pergola and the potential now for parked vehicles in the backyard, the neighborly thing to do would be to screen the length of that backyard along the west property line and I would ask the board for support. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing and I, I don't know if you have knowledge of any of the other.
So I would just say that we'll screen it on the west side as well and as of right now, the driveway's not in conversation, so we just really want to focus on the pergola and then the, the raised spa. So totally understanding the necessity for screening on the west side as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay.
I guess I'll ask a question, sorry.
No, that's, that's why I asked a question.
So you said the screening plan was, can you give me the heights again?
I, I actually misspoke when I said eight foot closest, it's 10 foot and 10 foot. So they're both 10-foot screenings.
So the structure is 13 feet, though?
It's the tip of the fireplace, yes.
So would you or your client be willing to screen to the height of the structure as most likely the ordinance is going to require us to?
If that's the necessity, we certainly will make that accommodation.
So I believe if we can screen it, that seems to be the objection from the neighbor that's mostly being impacted by it, was the appropriate screening 12 months of the year? So I didn't hear any other permission from the neighbor most impacted. Obviously, the HOA wants more information, but we can only look at what we're looking at right now.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any of those other things in front of us.
And some of them may not require, depending on which part they go with, maybe more of a building issue than a ZBA issue, depending on where they do these improvements. It might not even come to us. So we don't get to, we don't get to vote on that.
Right.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regard to the appeal at 3931 Oak Hills Drive for the accessory structures for the pergola, fireplace, barbecue area and spa. I move the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the structure is appropriate in the neighborhood as it's not going to be seen from the neighbors. It'll be fully screened on all sides, irregardless of a driveway that could, that could come into play later. The accessory structure does fit on the property line, it's fully in back of the rear of the house and a rear setback, doesn't encroach on the side setbacks. And it needs to be screened 365 days a year.
Do you need to screen the spa?
Spa and, the spa and the pergola needs to be screened. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structures and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional screening plantings will be required to screen the shed or the pergola for public view as well as the spa 12 months out of the year.
Support.
I have motion support, any discussion?
At the height of the structure? I wouldn't, I didn't hear that in the motion, but.
At the height of the structure, at planting.
Right.
Yes. Okay, that's clarification then? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The request as modified is granted.
Thank you, board.
Calling item six, 3055 Patch.
Hi, my name's Stephen Tavi at 3055 Patch Drive. I'm just requesting construction of a shed in my backyard as well as the, the setback variance as well.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
So on the packet, it shows you're going to go, you're encroaching 13 feet in the required 16-foot setback, so you want to be three feet from the property line.
Correct, so it's in the corner and there's basically two fences. And one of them is a privacy fence and so you won't even be able to see it from the one side. And then the only side that you'll be able to see, and so the south side, you can see the neighbor. And so in their yard, they have a shed as well, so, yeah, I'm hoping to be on that side. It also basically. that's mostly being impacted by it, was the appropriate screening 12 months of the year? So I didn't hear any other permission from the neighbor most impacted. Obviously, the HOA wants more information, but we can only look at what we're looking at right now.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any of those other things in front of us.
And some of them may not require, depending on which part they go with, maybe more of a building issue than a ZBA issue, depending on where they do these improvements. It might not even come to us, so we don't get to, we don't get to vote on that.
Right.
So...
Mr. Schroeder, I'd like to make a motion. In regard to the appeal at 3931 Oak Hills Drive, for the accessory structures for the pergola fireplace, barbecue area, and spa, I move the request to be approved and submitted based on information presented. Applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the structure is appropriate in the neighborhood, as it's not going to be seen from the neighbors. It'll be fully screened on all sides, irregardless of a driveway that could come into play later. The accessory structure does fit on the property line, it's fully in back of the rear of the house, and a rear setback, doesn't encroach on the side setbacks, and it needs to be screened 365 days a year.
Do you want to screen the spa?
Spa and, the spa and the pergola needs to be screened. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structures, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional screening plantings will be required to screen the shed, or the pergola from public view, as well as the spa, 12 months out of the year.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion?
At the height of the structure? I wouldn't, I didn't hear that in the motion, but...
At the height of the structure, add planting.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, that's clarification then. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The request, as modified, is granted.
Thank you, board.
Calling item six, 3055 Patch.
Hi, my name's Stephen Taubie, at 3055 Patch Drive. I'm just requesting construction of a shed in my backyard, as well as the setback variance as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
So, on the packet, it shows you're going to go, you're encroaching 13 feet in the required 16-foot setback, so you want to be three feet from the property line.
Correct. So it's in the corner, and there's basically two fences, and one of them is a privacy fence, and so you won't even be able to see it from the one side. And then the only side that you'll be able to see, and so the south side, you can see the neighbor, and so in their yard, they have a shed as well. So, yeah, I'm hoping to be on that side. It also basically will tuck it away, and so what I'm hoping to do is not have it in the center of my yard. And so I think that if it's in that spot, it will look really nice and tucked away, and plus it'll be a newer style shed, so I think that it'll be, it'll actually look pretty nice in the yard, too, so.
But you'd have to screen that, then.
Yeah, we, if you, we keep saying everybody has to screen their structure to the height of the structure, and have to have the plantings on their part of the property. So I'm trying to work with you to understand that. You have to put some type of screening around your structure so nobody can see it, regardless of what your neighbors have.
No problem.
So I don't know if we can do that in three feet.
So, on the screen there, so that on the right-hand side is the chain link fence, no, no problem there. Would you also require behind it with the privacy fence?
In the front, you can't see it from your driveway.
So you can't see the shed, you cannot see it from the street at all? So if you, I have a picture from the street, and so it's really far back, and so to the left, that is from the street, there's no way you can see the shed from the street.
Three... I was going to say that.
I actually went to your house. I took a look at it to see, to understand your limitations, so I see where you're putting it.
Yeah.
But when it's winter, your neighbors can't see it. That, that's the thing we continue to push. So, this is just comments, and we can talk about it as a board, but that's going to need to be a thing, no matter what you do.
Yeah, so I understand, whatever, whatever you guys want to do, I respect your opinions. My, my personal opinion, from being there, I don't see it as an issue. There's, I don't think you can see it at all. I think that from, I don't know, the distance from the street to this, just the fence line, but it's, it's a pretty big lot, it's three-quarters of an acre, so it's, it would be really difficult to see from the street. You'd have to really stop and look, whether it's winter or summer, so.
Okay.
But whatever your decision is, I respect, so.
We're trying to work together.
Yeah.
Plan together.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, so the motion would be, it's, it's got to be screened from public view.
Got to be screened.
In all directions, and that, you're going to have to meet that requirement, so those plantings that we saw in the picture would need to be evergreen. So if you're saying they're evergreen, that would satisfy it. If they're not, then you got to plant. Make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
But three feet is going to be very challenging.
If that's the case, and I need to put evergreen behind it, can I do, can I have the shed be five feet from essentially both property lines?
You can always move it farther away from the lot line.
That's always good.
And it's particularly helpful to us, because that means you're serious about the screening. So...
What are your thoughts?
So now, so now are we changing? So, so you're agreeing to five feet, so we could put that in the motion? You're going to keep it five feet? All right, then we put that in the motion, so that it's clear that there's enough room for the screening. All right, who's ready?
I'll do public.
I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this? Close public hearing, bring it back. Thank you.
Mr. Schroeder, make a motion. So with regard...
Oh, no, 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 I thought you had a discussion for you. Go ahead.
Do you mind if I actually make my dis... I'm just struggling with the five feet. So I understand he has a big yard, and I don't want it to be in his middle of his backyard. I, I get that, so, but allowing him to be encroaching on his neighbors, is that, are we, are we okay with that? So what is, why would be okay with it here versus other places? What is the practical difficulty of the need, besides not wanting to be in the middle of his yard? Which I can truly appreciate and understand that it would be burdensome and reduce the space.
Point.
So what is the feet that we think is appropriate? If somebody says five feet is okay, I'm just, I want to have it discussed as a board.
So he was encroaching how much initially?
He originally said three, and he was willing to move it to five, so that we could have more evergreen plantings. If you, as a board, don't have a problem, I just would like to know.
Well, if it's 16 feet away, is it really putting it in the middle of his yard? When you've got a yard that big?
It would be, it would be an inconvenience, for sure. And I think that personally, if you were to move it 16 feet out, it would be more centered on the neighbor's yard, rather than being tucked away in the corner. So I think visually, I think it would look worse, but...
And then move it... It may make it even more visible from the...
And again, I can agree with that. Again, when we looked at his property where it is, just, I don't know, five feet is where we want to be. That's all.
He's thinking more?
You have to be able to plant the trees and maintain them. So if I put an arborvitae there, when the arborvitae gets big, you have to be on your property while you're maintaining these plantings, right?
True. And so then the arborvitae's are even closer to the...
So that, that is where we come to that burden. So again, wanting him to be able to have his structure, but working like...
I think five feet is enough to work around.
Okay.
We do, we've proved five feet.
You know, this is where Bob Taylor was so valuable, because he was an arborvitae expert, so.
We have enough.
So could you go to seven?
I, I think that the more you move it from that corner, I think that...
The more...
The more difficult it is going to be to hide it. I think that there's already an existing large bush that's there on one side that will, will hide it from, from the north side.
But it's got the evergreen. If it's, if it's not evergreen bush, you're going to have to plant around the shed.
Well, we haven't heard from the adjacent.
Yeah, I haven't, I have to step out for a moment, but how large is your yard? What's, what's the size of your lot?
I have a three-quarter acre lot, so it's...
So you have basically a half-acre backyard, right?
It seems so. He has a lot of, he has a lot of land, but tucked in that corner does keep it...
I agree, I agree with that. I agree with that.
It's fully screened.
You have to screen it.
In, in the other quarter, there's, there's existing trees that rather not, not done down from that corner. And this one seems like a good...
It does seem reasonably good location. So the question is, how much space does he need to maintain the screening or the arborvitae? So be offered two or five?
For that?
And then also to make sure...
Oh, five's enough.
Yeah.
I think they can do it in three, I hate to say, but...
Well, we got five, so we're not going to...
That's what Bob always said.
It came out because then you, you know, when it's mature, you need that space to actually maintain it.
Yes, and they're going to get, they're going to get big, and it's, it's a big...
I know, this, I'm just going to throw this question out there. Obviously, we haven't heard anything from the public comments, but did you have any kind of conversation with the adjacent neighbor about possibly putting a shed there, and...
I, I did not ask them about it.
Because that's, you know, that's moving mainly other... Concern, too, is...
Well, it's going to be screened from neighbor.
Right.
From public view.
Again, I want them to be able to have something on the structure. I understand the need for it, I truly do. I think five feet is too close. I'd rather see like seven or eight. I personally would. But again, I always reflect back to the board on your decisions.
Well, you're part of the board, so we're getting your feedback.
But your expertise, I love spirited discussion.
Yeah, well, that's what we got here. This is very rich.
If you require it from the, so from the, I'm trying to orientate myself. So basically, on, on the east side, I would prefer if you agreed to it to keep it within five feet, but if you require on the south side for it to be farther, I think that that would make sense, because that is where the, the south side is the chain link fence, and so that would be okay if it's, you know, seven feet. But then I think that the privacy fence, it would make, make the most sense to be budding up right against that. That's my, my opinion, because they won't be able to see it anyways.
After you guys.
But I would prefer to keep it five and five, if we can do that.
Understandable.
Mr. Schroeder, make a motion.
Thank you so much.
So with regard to the permission request, the appeal at 3055 Patch Drive for the accessory structure, I move the request to be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the use of the accessory structure, accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood, as we've been discussing. Further, the dimensional variance, to cover that, in regard to the dimensional variance at the same address for the new shed encroaching, I'm going to say five feet by five feet placed into your yard, so that would be encroaching, how many feet?
Eleven feet.
Eleven feet into the 16-foot westwardly side yard setback. Let's see. I move the variance to be approved, as I just stated, and based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that it could be in more public view if we moved it out further into the yard. He has a corner area where it will be tucked in. This is going to make it not an injustice to adjoining neighbors. The unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated due to the fact that if he, once again, were to bring it out further, it could be more viewable to neighbors and the public, and that is not self-created because of the, you know, the view from other neighbors' yards. If this motion is approved, it must include unnecessary permits to be made within one year for the proposed shed, and all permits to be obtained prior to construction. I am going to include that additional evergreen plantings may be required to be screened the shed from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Opposed.
So why don't we take a roll call?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Giogrande?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Rosati?
Yes.
Gettleman?
Yes.
Motion carries four, I'm sorry, five to two.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item seven, 3424 Franklin.
Good evening again. Jason Bryan, JCB Design and Build, 325 North Avenue, Mount Clemens. On behalf of the Frankels at 3424 Franklin Road. We are asking for a few things on this property. Start, to start out, three pergola areas over the barbecue area, back of house, and the pool area, all within the required setbacks and within the height requirements. Based on the house orientation, no neighboring views to the lake will be impacted. Strategic evergreens will be planted to buffer views from the neighbor, the neighbors without impacting lake views. Next, we have a grotto. This is a waterfall feature that will be built into the existing topography, five feet above the pool deck surface. It will be nestled, nested in and built with boulders and ledge stones, so it will have a natural look and fit into the surroundings with no views from the neighbors. And then some retaining walls. Part of this project contains plans to construct a room under the patios that will be used for mechanical equipment and storage. Due to the grades of the property, and to create an entry into the space, sections of the wall will be exposed more than four feet, but we plan to, to hide these with evergreen hedges, so they're not visible from any neighboring views, and keep a nice soft, harmonious look.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? So I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, if there's no comments. I'll start with the permission request first, in regards to the appeal at 3424 Franklin Road, for the pergola, grotto, the accessory structures. I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-76.6 standards, because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for the neighbor. These are very common accessory structures, and the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of the property, because it will be screened. In terms of the dimensional variance for the same property address, for the retaining walls exceeding four feet in height, I also move that that be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the topography of the lot. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, because there will be well-screened, and the unique circumstances of the property, again, because of the sloping topography, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion must include, also includes, oh, sorry, application for, all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structure, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreens may be required to screen the banner for public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the accessory structure at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? I just note, in, in our packet, we did have a couple letters of opposition to this, that we did take in consideration as part of the factual background for this. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is granted.
Thank you, board. Have a great night.
So, calling the next item, item nine, Jocelyn. I'm going to have you run this one. I'm going to step out for a second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Grant McDonald, seeking approval for a shed at 4670 Braverton Drive. Hoping I can give you a little bit of brevity this evening. Basically looking for a 16-by-12-foot by 10-foot shed, compliant with all the setback requirements in the rear corner of the yard. The shed is not visible from the street, so the only concerns would be planting of evergreens across the rear and east property line.
Any questions from the board?
This is an existing shed?
No, it would be a new structure.
Any questions? Can I open the public hearing? Anyone like to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for either discussion or motion.
I'd like to make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 4670 Braverton Drive for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance of Section 42-76 standards, because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood, and will not have any view to the neighbors, because again, we're going to completely screen it to the height of the structure at time of planting. With that, if approved, the motion will, will include application for all necessary permits must be made within...
One year.
It said existing. Must be made within one year for the new construction, and additional ever screens, evergreen screenings will be required for the shed. I know it says existing, but...
Oh, here permits, there's no...
Mine doesn't have that, so. So, a single-family affidavit.
No.
That's Hickory Grove.
Here I know, but it's the same verbiage here.
Okay. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation. And again, you are going to plant evergreens to the height of the structure. Support.
Do I have a motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, calling applicant number 10, 2930 West Hickory Grove Road.
Thank you for having us. Tim Shoemaker with Dual Landscape Architecture out of Birmingham.
Ryan Pasquale with Impero Homes out of Bloomfield Township.
And we are here representing the Nalamathu family. Today, we're looking at a proposed pergola, which is replacing similar footprint to another pergola that was there for the previous 12 years, and it recently collapsed, so that's what initiated this project to be rebuilt, and we are here today to discuss the height of the structure. It complies in terms of square footage and elements, just height-wise, that's the highest point. If you can go back, Corey, one more.
Right there.
So the top right, the top triangle of the roof on the right side of the top right graphic, that's two feet above the limit, and then the chimney was extended another two feet per building department request to set it higher than the roof. So on the east side of the structure, we were out of compliance, and you can see the grade slopes in the bottom right corner increasing the height, and the patio level is matching existing today, which the pool is existing, shown in the plan. So when you're on the west, the west side, looking east, it's compliant minus the small sliver. When you're on the east side, looking west, the structure appears bigger because of the slope, the topography. From the west side, we will add a wall of evergreen screening, and then we're also working with four 40-to-50-foot-high existing mature maples that are... From the west side, we will add a wall of evergreen screening, and then we're also working with four forty to fifty-foot-high existing mature maples that are right down the property line about two feet in on our side, and then that neighbor does not have a single window on that side of the house, so they don't really have any views of the structure.
So when I was going over the pictures of the staff, it looks like there were some, some, some work started on this? There were poles in the ground, or?
The existing structure had, has collapsed, um, and was a safety issue, which had to be removed immediately. All the timbers have rotted and collapsed. Upon inspection of the existing footings, um, the previous builder, not me, um, only poured those footings at thirty inches deep. So all of them had to be pulled.
What you see in the picture there, that is the post of the previous structure, which the roof collapsed. So you see the post, which I think today those are now removed, right, Ryan? Those have been removed down to grade.
Correct.
There is other work on the site that is in open permits, but there's no construction so far on the pergola structure itself.
Correct.
There's, uh, the building permit has been issued for the outdoor kitchen and for the footings for future use. It has been issued.
I did stop by the site and saw that, but again, they said they just got everything ready. They were not pouring anything until upon getting approval. So any improvements they were doing to the property, they were waiting upon our permission.
Okay.
And they even stated that, and I happened to stumble across it while they were there. So I can attest to everything they're saying on that. And then, um, I did see the screening that they talked about with the big maples, but obviously, we need evergreen screening, which they talked about that they're going to be putting in.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question on the screening. So the screening is along the side or in the back on the golf course view? Which is the west?
It's along the, the, Corey, can you go to the plan view, please? Uh, that one right there. So in this plan, the left side of the yellow box, there's a staggered row of green giant arborvitae's.
Okay.
And then on the, uh, west property line, all the circles down the property line are existing trees, but then there will be supplemental screening on the edge of the patio there next to the turf at the end of the pool. So it will be additional screening from what's there today.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this request? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
So, uh, regards to the dimensional variance, um, in regards to the appeal at twenty-nine, thirty West Hickory Grove for the dimensional variance for the pavilion height being eighteen-three plus the additional two feet that was required by building for the chimney, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all compliance for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because a lot of this is topography-driven, as well as the scale of the home. There's no injustice to the, uh, adjoining neighbors because of the fact that we're going to be screening this with, uh, plantings to the height of the structure. Uh, unique circumstances of this lot are the topography, and this is not self-created because of the fact that we are repairing something and making it better. Um, and then I'll go to the, uh, permission request. So in regards to the appeal at twenty-nine, thirty West Hickory Grove for the accessory structure for the pergola, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance of section forty-two dash seven, six standards because use of this accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood because a lot of people in this area have these big pergolas overlooking that beautiful golf course. Now, if approved, um, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation. Again, uh, single-family affidavit will be required, but I don't know if we're going to need that. And, uh, again, additional evergreen screenings will be required along both that west side, which you guys have already shown us anyways. Can we get to the height of the structure?
Uh, we can get taller, but anything over sixteen feet is only possible to plant with a spade truck, and we do not have enough access to exceed sixteen feet of height.
I'd be okay with that. I did walk your, you don't have enough room there to do a spade truck appropriately.
Now, if I take out the existing maple trees, we can, but I know.
We don't want to do that. So up to sixteen feet and then let them grow.
Yeah.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
You too.
I'm calling item eleven, eleven forty-six Lineback Avenue.
It's me. My name's Roy Thomas. I'm the homeowner there at eleven forty-six Lineback. We're seeking a five-foot extension on our front porch to make it a little more usable. We built the house about twenty-five years ago and really never have been able to sit on the front porch. My mom's ninety-one years old, and she loves sitting on the front porch, and it's very difficult. I brought some pictures of the front porch, how small it is, so I just wanted to extend it out five feet. And I think I actually went ahead, and, uh, I got a picture here, not that it can apply to anything, but if you. And this one I just took yesterday. Every home that is on this side of my same block, uh, they're actually ten to fifteen feet closer to the road than I actually would want to be. So you can't even see my home from Humphreys when you come down. I went ahead and, um, talked to my only two neighbors on the opposite side. They gave their blessings, they gave their consent. I talked to two neighbors on my right side. We got a fantastic neighborhood. They gave their consent, uh, so I wanted to make sure I covered all the bases, uh, but, uh, only for, excuse me. Stop laughing, Fay. Fifty-five years of marriage, this is what happens. This is what happens.
We know how hard it is to perform in front of an audience. You're doing a great job.
Thanks, babe. But, but try to keep it short, and always spend lengthy, but, uh, I would love to just have that be a little more usable in the front yard. And, uh, so I would appreciate your consideration for that five.
Well, you actually got a letter or something.
For it that you had signed.
I have this, I submitted that. All of my neighbors are on board with me, and they're happy for us to have that extension, so.
Any questions from the board? Open this to the public. Anyone like to speak? Close it to the public and bring it back for a motion.
Dimensional variance required for the home addition approaching twelve feet into the required forty-foot front yard setback and for expanding an existing non-conformity. I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that, uh, he is, uh, set back quite a ways from his lot, and other neighbors are even closer to that, uh, that frontage. There's no injustice to the joint neighbors by the reason that, uh, again, it is just an extension and it doesn't make him any closer than his neighbors are. And this is, uh, contributes to the unique circumstances with the property, and that is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Enjoy your porch. Yep. So calling the next item, item twelve, uh, sixteen, seventy Keller.
Good evening. My name is William Stutman, owner of, uh, sixteen, seventy Keller. We're looking to get in a garage.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
It's a detached garage?
The only thing, it says in our packet, high shed. Is it a shed?
It's a garage. So if you look down in the notes.
It says, I just, it was, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to tell it.
Yep. No, it's.
Perfect.
Corrected that in this, in the pre-meeting. So this is a garage. Any other questions? Open this to the public for comment. Close the public hearing, bring it back.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would love to make a motion.
That would be great.
So I'll go with the permission request. In regards to the appeal at sixteen, seventy Keller Lane, I move the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance of section forty-two dash seven, six standards because the use of accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as many homes have an additional structure for the, um, garage area as they need more storage. And then we'll go with the dimensional request. So, um, in regards to the appeal at sixteen, seventy Keller Lane, um, for the variance or the dimensional request for the exceeding one-half of the ground floor area of the main building for the accessory, uh, structure, I move we approve the variance as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all compliance for practical difficulty because compliance with the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because I believe this is so that we keep cars in garages, not in our yard, make it look cleaner and nice for our neighbors. And again, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because we're actually doing this to improve the look and the aesthetics of our neighborhood. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated because it is a small two-car garage you guys have now. This is now a more standard for modern, uh, vehicles. This is not self-created due to the fact that you didn't build the house, so you didn't make the garage that size. With all that, if the application, if this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and, um, yeah. I don't, we're not requiring any additional evergreen screening because it's a garage and a shed.
Yep.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion?
Thank you very much.
Oh, oh, oh.
We've got to get the vote, and then you can leave.
Don't celebrate too soon.
You've waited so long tonight. Just a little longer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, going to item fourteen, one, two, five, three, Cunningham Row. Welcome.
My name's Christian Donley. I'm, uh, the landscaper that is currently working on this project. The homeowner wanted me to represent him here. But basically, we started out, we're looking, we're seeking a variance of an additional four feet for the retaining wall that ended up needing to be installed because of his whole back bank, um, was starting to erode. So basically, the, we originally came into this project where it was just, that whole back area was overgrown. It had tons and tons of dead trees and junk and trash in the back, and in the process of cleaning it up, we realized there was more and more, uh, dead trees that were, uh, dangerous to the, to his house. Some of them were even falling apart during storms. So as, um, we cleaned off the vines that were growing on the dead trees, so they made it appear like they were alive, these large elm trees and that type of thing, he had a, a tree contractor come in and take out the dead trees only. And then, that's when we realized he had a bigger problem. There was no longer any, um, stabilization of the soil there, and he was, it was washing out. So we originally were just running gutters, new gutters, uh, downspout drainage down through the backyard, and then this thing evolved into what it became. So I'm guilty of not knowing that I needed, um, a permit, number one, so that's my fault. And then as I tried to go through that process, I learned that, once I was ready to get the permit, I needed, I mean, a variance for the additional four feet. So we stopped everything as per order and, um, were willing to continue to put larger, uh, evergreens all the way in there. We just didn't want to do any more work without approval.
Okay, so I was confused by the pictures because it, that's what it looks like. You started.
You were ordered to stop, and that, that's why the retaining walls look.
That's where, that's what, yeah, that's what it looks like now.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll open this to the public. Step forward and get your name and address.
Yes, of course. Hi, my name is Linda Alray. I live at one, two, three, six Hidden Lake Drive. Um, my home, um, is in the subdivision, which is immediately to the north of the subject property. The only ingress and egress road to the Lakes of Echo Park subdivision, of which my husband and I, who's here, are officers of our association, are representing several of our neighbors. That road, Hidden Lake Drive, is the only ingress and egress road to our subdivision. We became aware of this project last summer because the, um, landscape architect was having dump trucks full of stones dumped and spread across the entire Hidden Lake Drive, which prevented any ingress or egress for the vehicles coming and going from the homeowners or emergency trucks into our neighborhood. This happened at least four or five times where we were literally driving over the Rubicon Trail to try to get out of our own subdivision. That problem's obviously gone away now that we know what the rocks were being used for, which was basically to build a Gabon wall, um, which is what the stones in those wire cages are called. After doing some research, um, I did speak with, is it Christopher? I'm sorry. I did speak with Christian about what they were doing with the rocks last summer, and he said they were building a lovely rock wall, um, at the subject residence. I asked if he had permits, and I was told no, but he was in the process of getting them. This was at the time when the rocks were still piled in the road. There was really no wall being built. I called the township, and they indicated there was no permit process currently in the queue. I relayed this to Christian, um, and he says he would be moving on it, but as we moved into this summer, the project stopped over the winter. Uh, we saw what was being erected, which were giant metal cages filled with these rocks, um, that were being stacked at least three high. Um, he's asking for a nine-foot variance, but I walked up to the wall, and even though it was an intimidating experience approaching a wall made of stones and cages, I measured some of those heights to be closer to twelve feet. So I'm not saying that's an exact measurement, but I'm definitely questioning the nine-foot variance request. In any event, outside of that, um, the homeowner and his landscape architect completely completed this project without permits or variances until our subdivision called the township and complained. I suspect if we didn't complain, no permits or variances would have been requested. We find it to be a disfiguring, um, landscape feature. Every person entering or exiting our subdivision sees it since Hidden Lake Drive, which abuts that on its right or south, sees that structure. We feel that there could have been many other, more tasteful solutions for the problem the homeowner was having, which was some sinkage of his porch or deck into the cliff that he built his home on. To some degree, one has to question why someone would have built a home in that precarious position, but nonetheless, that's what he did, and now he has a problem. I understand he needs to address it, but as you can see, the trees that are being planted are very few, very small, and in fact, if you were to drive by now, you'd see at least five or six are dead. So we are totally opposed to the allowance of a permit and a nine- or twelve-foot Gabon wall. And again, after doing some research, we discovered that walls, retaining walls of this construction are typically used by road crews when they're digging expressways to hold back retaining walls. They're very rarely used in residential developments, let alone one of the caliber of Bloomfield Township. I don't know what the solution is, but this is not it, and we are asking the board to respectfully decline his request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to? Speak on this item? So I will, uh, close the public hearing and then ask the applicant to respond to the comments.
Um, the reason we chose Gabion Baskets is because the, as we got into the job, the whole entire bank is sand, and so it, to me, the best solution was to allow water to sift through and not build up any hydraulic pressure behind the walls. So any other walls we would have used, uh, they all end up pushing hydraulically, and it's because of all the natural, uh, large trees that were in there, holding it with the root systems, it, it became, he was literally losing his back patio. We could walk underneath it. It was washing out, and that's what started the whole project. Old gutter drain tile was washing right underneath. That's when we became aware of how bad the situation was, so that's why, uh, we, we chose to do that. She is correct. There was some problems with the delivery guy that dropped the rock in the road, and we, as soon as it was brought to our attention, we got it moved with our loaders right away. So that, that happened actually twice, not four times, but whatever. So I apologized to her for it, took ownership of it, and, uh, it, it's just a very hard area to reach, you know, working in there and trying to get, to do what we had done. He is willing to, to plant much larger. He is willing to, to plant much larger and more. I just stopped doing anything because I didn't want to violate the stop work order. So, that's kind of where we're at, you know, so I don't know what else to say other than or try to offend anyone. We're, it was trying to solve the problem.
Answered a lot of the, any other questions from the board on the material?
Ask the township, has the township ever given permits to anyone to build walls of this construction within the township? To your knowledge?
Oh, Gabion?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of, not to say that it's never hap- Not that I'm aware of. Not to say it's never happened because oftentimes there could be, well, come to think of it, I guess if it's over four feet, chances, I mean, not that I am aware of.
Because there could be, just if it's under four feet, we wouldn't necessarily see it.
Right.
Correct, that's kind of, I, so I don't want to say never. I'm not familiar with the zoning board.
I think I've seen it here myself.
Well, I understand the concept and why it's being used here.
Yeah.
Because you'd end up with a disaster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's more than aesthetic, there's a functional.
But if you're going to screen the whole thing, aesthetics don't really matter as much, right?
I'm prepared to make a motion unless somebody has questions. All right, with respect to property located at twelve-fifty-three Cunningham Way, I would move to grant the dimensional variance to allow the retaining walls not to exceed nine feet in any area because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The practical difficulty is, one, the unique shape of the lot and the steep drop in the grade. In addition, this is necessitated by virtue of the fact that the land is eroding away, resulting in potential, you know, dangerous conditions for the home. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because we are going to make sure it's screened and, and not impacting them. And the unique circumstances I've already discussed in this is not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structures. All permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Five business days.
Okay. All right, oh, all right. Five business days and I will add another condition that the wall, retaining walls must be screened to the height of the walls with evergreen plantings fully screened so that they are, remain screened twelve months out of the year.
Support.
I have a motion to support, any discussion?
Just, I would like to point out one thing. If we don't allow them to do this, which is one of the people that said, the property will erode into their street.
Right.
And block egress for their thing. So again, when we talk about some of these issues, we don't want to stop egress or start problems. So, that is why I believe this is important that we allow this.
That's a good comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is granted. All right, item fifteen was withdrawn, we'll go to item sixteen. One-nine-four-four, Bayou Road. The applicant ready?
Good evening. Thank you for taking your time. Tony Berish, Higher Ground Landscaping Services, address is two-ninety Jotham Avenue. I'm supporting Auburn Hills. I'm supporting, I'm here to ask for a variance for a retaining wall. This is Derek Laheca.
Yes, I'm, Tony's a landscape designer, so, responsible for the drawings here.
We're asking permission because we have an old wood wall that is sitting on the property line, as you can see in that picture. We were replacing that with a grand ledge style retaining wall system, basically sitting in the same spot. And the height of it is going to be approximately four feet tall. So I know we need a variance for that as well.
Is that the height of existing as well?
Probably pretty close.
But you're just, it's just going to go to grade?
Yeah. Yeah, but there is a curb stop that we're putting on, so, on the dr- so they don't drive off the driveway?
That would be good.
Yeah.
Especially with that height, yeah. Okay? Any other questions? It, it's funny, we have clusters of sheds that we, and now, tonight's retaining wall. Open this to the public. Close the public hearing. Motion? I mean, that existing retaining wall looks very unsafe.
But it isn't screened.
Yeah, it's on the property line.
But it's on the property.
Yeah, nothing you can do. It's, it's like the other, it's like the other one we had earlier. What are you suggesting?
I'm not suggesting anything. I was just pointing it out, not suggesting anything.
You're out of suggestions now, huh?
No, on this one I am. So, I would love to make a motion in regards to the appeal at nineteen-forty-four Bayou Drive for the dimensional variance regarding the retaining wall exceeding four feet in height. I move the variance to be approved as requested based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because strict compliance of the letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would now go into the neighbor's property and cause harm to the neighbor. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbor because this is going to be an improvement of what they have now and will be able to last longer term. Unique circumstance of this property is the fact that there is a significant height difference between their property and the neighbor's. This is not self-created because they didn't make the wall. With all that, if this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structure and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Forward, support.
I have a motion to support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Calling item seventeen, two-six-four-zero, Turtle Lake.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Preka Bereishai. I work for the developer and the association. The architect is from out of, out of town, out of Grand Haven. He couldn't be here, so he asked that I come in his place, so.
He owes you a big favor.
Yeah, a big one. And the property owner's here.
Okay.
So, they're seeking approval for a retaining wall that measures up to twelve feet in height because of the, the grade of the lot. It's a pretty steep grade from the front of the curb down to the lake. So, he, he included a bunch of pictures and plans and we can go through them. So you can see the, the existing site. This was recently split and it's directly behind an original, you can see the white structure to the right of two-six-four-zero there. That was an original building that's now used as a maintenance garage. So, the view from the road will be minimal. So if you keep going, you'll be able to see a few.
But it, it's not twelve feet. Continuous, it, it builds up to that.
Yeah, it builds up to that point, so.
And you can see that, I mean, that's a great visual for it.
Yeah. So, yeah, I have a few of his comments. I mean, hopefully I can help answer them, but.
Yeah, it's necessary because of the grade. Yep. You understand it?
Yeah.
So, any questions? I'll open this to the public. Does anyone here like to?
Maybe I didn't listen well. How high is it at its shortest height?
I did not ask that question. What is the shortest height?
There should.
It, it might start at grade, so it might go from, you know, you know, a foot maybe and, and it builds up to that point.
Okay.
But I notice you've designed it in a way where it's going to look like it's part of the house versus being some other material that sticks out.
Yeah, it's going to be heavily screened.
Yes.
And there's a big easement that separates the two properties.
So, any, is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment, come to the podium? All right, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to what's left of the board for a motion.
Yeah. You can do whatever you like.
Would you like to do it?
Sure, I would love to do it. In regards to the appeal at twenty-six-forty Turtle Lake Drive for the variance in regards to a retaining wall that is approximately, are we going to hold them to twelve feet? It says over twelve feet. I can't just go twelve feet to fifty feet. Sorry, Preka.
Yeah, it's twelve feet.
I think the internals said nine feet to twelve feet or something.
Okay, so we'll go up to twelve feet. I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because there's a significant topography issue with this lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because we are going to be screening this from the adjoining neighbors twelve months out of the year. Is that correct, Preka?
That's, yeah, my understanding, yes.
To the height of the retaining wall?
Yes.
Perfect. Unique circumstance of this property has been demonstrated, given the fact that, again, this is the current topographic lot, we don't want to change it. It's beautiful, it goes out to the lake. It's a beautiful lot. And then this is not self-created due to the fact that you didn't, you were trying to minimize topography changes so that it doesn't cause any undue burdensome to our neighbors. Now, if the applicant, if this motion is approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed retaining wall and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Again, and we will be requiring that you screen this from your adjoining neighbor.
Support.
I have a motion to support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, congratulations on your home.
Calling item eighteen, one-eight-two-two, Fox River Drive.
Got to start with one.
You're having fun, that's good.
Come on down.
We, we like our participants to have fun.
Okay.
Yeah, that's raining.
Me talk? Okay, so what we're looking at.
The meeting has brought rain.
Is it raining?
Or the, the air finally go on.
No, that's rain. I'm sorry, we interrupted.
Oh, no, that's okay. So, Fox Hills, I'm on the board of my neighborhood. This has been a long process over the past several months. We are nearing the end and we replaced some old pools that were over fifty years old and we are seeking to do two different things. We can start with the fence, which is right there. We have right now a nine-foot fence on the Updike roadside of our pool grounds and we have a six-foot fence right now that is the same type on the north side facing one of our neighbors. What we are looking to do is to replace the remaining chain link fence that is old and not in code, that is on the south side by the parking lot with the same six-foot cedar fencing, adding self-closing gates for entrance. And then also in the process on the east side is bumping the fence forward, so it actually bumps up to the front edge of our clubhouse rather than the back edge. We already have approval, support approval from the neighbor to the north of our property. She has given approval that the fence could be extended on her side. She's fine with that and we would also be moving all of the screening that we had in front of the fence when it was at the back line of the clubhouse. We would be bringing that same screening forward to be in front, so anybody on Fox River Drive, what they would see is still beautiful arborvitae and other nice plantings in front of the six-foot cedar fence that would be brought forward there. So that's one part. Any questions about the fencing? All right. The next part, we used to have a very tall pavilion that was on our property, but it was not doing well. The floor was bowed and it was also in a really bad place. So, in the process of redoing the, the deck and the pools, we ripped out that pavilion and what we're seeking to do is add three smaller pavilions. If any of you are familiar with Costco, the yardistry gazebo that they often sell in the front, that is, is the same company that makes these. This is same kind of product, the cedar aluminum roof and we're looking at installing two pavilions for use with, for residents and one of them is going to be for the guards. The one that runs up and down would be for the guards and then the other two would be for residents to be able to use for shade. And they are significantly shorter than the previous pavilion, where the previous pavilion stood probably about, I would say, close to fifteen to seventeen feet tall. These are, I believe, ten feet? Ten, possibly twelve, ten, ten feet, eight inches or is it twelve feet? I can't read it from here. Eleven feet. These are eleven feet tall. So, from the Updike roadside, they would barely be noticeable. I think there might be a picture that shows from the Updike Road, what you would see, um, I don't think that's the one, there's, maybe it's not in this grouping?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So what you can see on that picture, actually, I don't know if you can see it from here, but what you see of the clubhouse in that picture would be about the amount that you would see of the pavilions that is closest to the fence.
But there, is there going to be, there's going to be screening in front of the fence now.
Is that right or no?
On this side, not necessarily, because you would barely even see the pavilion. The previous pavilion stood up a lot higher, probably from the road, it would be probably about as high as those trees that you see. It was closer, it's not as tall as those trees, but it was closer, so it stood up about as high as those trees. Are you looking for that picture?
Yeah, but.
Okay, it might be in the.
I don't think I have it. It's not in the file. We can pull it out of the file.
You can, if they find the picture, you'll be able to see the difference of what it used to look like versus what it will look like. And if, thank you for looking that up in the meantime. But, go ahead.
So, so the privacy fence, so it wasn't screened before?
No.
You're just replacing it to the same height and you're not planning to add any screening?
No. Can I walk over to this?
Well, I, I think, I don't know, is there any other questions? I, I think I get the picture because I have been, it was years ago, but I have been here, so I am familiar with the layout and I remember when you came before for, you know, you're, you're making some rather dramatic changes, so this, this is kind of consistent with what you did before. Any other questions from the board? So open this to the public for comment? Close the public comment and bring it back.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
So, in regard to the appeal at eighteen-twenty-two Fox River Drive for the permission request required for the pavilions and fence, I move that the request be approved is submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-point-six standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with the use of the property there. Also, it is, the location of it, it will not hinder obviously any of the neighbor's use. So, also with regard to the dimensional variance, I'd like to move that that variance also be approved as submitted and that based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that although this is a front yard, it is definitely, the variances should be requested. It's not any kind of injustice to adjoining neighbors. It's a unique type of property as that, it is, has a couple of front yard setbacks, but it is used in, in the fashion that it is and this is not self-created. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within a year for the structure and ground. Obviously, that, we didn't discuss any ground mounted mechanical units, but all applications must be submitted or made within the year and I'm not going to require any kind of evergreen plantings.
Support.
So I have a motion to support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
I love you all. Great work.
So many positive comments, people thanking us. It's really, it's a glamorous, glamorous job here. Item nineteen, two-two-eight-five Franklin Road. Is the applicant ready?
Yeah, that's right.
No, glamorous.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chris from Maverine Company and one-two-eight-five Wordsworth in Fernaldo. And we're here to request dimensional variance and a size variance for monument sign at this address. It's got an unusually large setback and it's a pretty large property and so we feel that the, between the two things there, that it justifies the size of the sign and the setback of the sign.
Okay. Any questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public. I'm sure someone here wants to comment on this? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back for.
I'll make a.
A motion. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at twenty-two-eight-five Franklin Road for a monument sign with zero foot setback and a hundred and forty square feet sign area.
and 140 square feet sign area, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict order of the, letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, and because without such a sign, people would not be able to see that because it's setback from the road. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Actually, this is better to be able to see where the property is. Unique circumstances of the property, again. Thank you. Nice punctuation. Unique circumstances of the property, again, because it's setback from the road and it's on a busy street, and so you definitely want a sign that's visible. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, with regards to number 20, I want to make a note that I was an active member of the BAC until earlier this year, but unable to act impartially.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. All right, so calling item 20, 4033 West Maple Road.
Alex Soroki with Soroki Architecture. I'm here this evening, joined by the general manager of the BAC, Derek Jacques, and the club president, Jess Burline, along with some board members and members. If we jump to the next slide.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Go ahead, Alex.
Okay. You know what? I think this is the wrong presentation, so.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to refer the site plan.
You've gone through a long evening. It's understandable.
No, it's okay. Sorry. We're here this evening to discuss some minimal improvements to the Birmingham Athletic Club, which has been in this location for approximately 75 years. We're proposing converting an existing tennis court in the northeastern portion of the property to four pickleball courts. We very strategically picked that location for the pickleball courts because it's furthest away from our resident neighbors and closest to Maple Road and the tennis courts, the adjacent tennis courts across Oak Hills Drive with Oakland Hills. We're proposing an expanding dining terrace. There is an existing terrace now, and we're proposing to renovate an existing service station hut along with an existing tiki bar. One, one thing I want to point out is that we are putting an acoustic barrier on the south portion of the fencing of the pickleball courts. And with that barrier, we had a really extensive sound study completed, and it was vetted by the township's consultant as well. With that acoustic barrier, it actually, there's no impact to the residential property directly south of ours. And there was a reading done of the average noise, ambient noise from the traffic generated from Maple Road, and at his property line, it was 55 decibels. And by actually adding this acoustic barrier, the reading at his property line is 45 decibels, so it's even less. I will open it up to any questions you may have. Trying to be succinct here.
Much appreciated. Any questions from the board?
I'd like to make a comment. The BAC did present this information to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission thoroughly reviewed it and, you know, approved that it move on to the suggested boards for approval.
I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to comment on this item? So can I just infer from all of your smiles that you're in favor of it? Give me a thumbs up. Thumbs up. Okay. Paddle's up. Okay. All right. So I'll bring it back then. Close the public hearing. Bring it back.
Did you ever talk to your neighbor to the south? Have you gotten there?
We did. So actually, since the last Planning Commission meeting, Derek, who's the general manager of the club, has met with the Oakland Hills Homeowners Association. Mr. Robinson, who's actually here earlier this evening, wrote a letter of support. So they're supportive of the project. He's been communicating and met with the president of the condo association, and they're supportive of the project. And we have met with the neighbor directly to the south and believe we've addressed his concerns.
And what are the hours of operations for the pickleball court?
So it's essentially sunrise to dusk.
There's no proposed lighting on the pickleball courts.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, it seems to me they picked the best location for it. I mean, it is, it is a racket and tennis club with a lot of activity that's been here for years, so it's in the unusual situation that the zoning for it's residential, and it's, it's really not a residential use. So for, you know, because of the long history and where they've chosen to put the courts, I think it makes a lot of sense. They've done the best they could to mitigate the location, which has been there for years. So this would be motion time? Because this is, this is our last item.
I don't need another motion. I'm good.
I know it's hard to end the meeting, but it's our last, last motion.
Okay, great.
Come on.
No, go ahead.
Go on with the debate.
We're going to fight over it.
Yeah.
Well, we got all these excited people giving thumbs up.
Yeah, look at their thumbs up. They're, they're in great shape. This meeting didn't tire them at all, so.
All right, so I'll start with the permission request. In regards to the appeal at 4033 West Maple Road for the pickleball court, tiki bar, which sounds awesome, service station hut, fire pits and fence, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure should not be objectionable to nearby residents because they went through a significant amount of work to make sure that it would not be objectionable in terms of noise, location, and all of that. In reference to the dimensional variance at the same location of 4033 West Maple Road, I also move that that variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the two frontages that they have. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, again, because of the location of the, the accessory structures and the pickle court. And then also because of that, they have taken a lot of consideration into making sure that they would not be objectionable. Unique circumstances of the property, again, it is a kind of a unique situation being in a residential area. Pickleball is something that is very popular, and I'm sure their members are very interested in it. And because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion, oh, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
We had an audience.
I'd like to commend all the members here for their stamina. You're obviously in great shape to go through. We typically don't go this long, so you're to be congratulated.
The healthiest crowd.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no, no. I have a discussion I don't.
In a second.
Oh, no, she wants to talk.
Oh, that's right. We can't adjourn. All right.
Hold on, didn't we, did we push something to the end of the meeting?
I don't think we did. Because he showed up.
Oh, he did show up. Okay, good. Okay.
Just really quick, really quick. I've been asked.
Oh, yeah, we do.
I'm sorry, you'll have to go outside. We're, we have one more.
One more really quick thing.
Yeah.
They're so enthusiastic.
Do we want to talk about it, Andrew?
We'd love to celebrate with you.
That's start time?
Yeah.
Can we talk about it?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So some new business. So as a board, we are discussing times, starting, our starting time closer to 6:30. As we have noticed that the meetings have been running longer, including township board meetings, and we want to be respectful of people's times at night. So we wanted to talk to every board and see what their thoughts are based on your guys'